Yes, they're going to the-
You weren't like this, Katie.
Oh, sorry. Okay, we're on the air. We can be on the air. But was there a lot of traffic down for the-
Yes.
You had to come up in the-
Spilling out for the concert.
Up one floor.
I'm surprised. Look at the-
The weather is very-
It looks sketchy.
It's raining right now.
Well, do you want to get- we can get started.
Is it?
Looks like it.
Just came in. It wasn't. It's all dark. Somebody said Canada's-
I was looking to see where Melbourne Reef was.
But you can smell it.
That's what somebody said. I haven't smelled it.
I guess we can. Yep, here we go. Well, welcome to this evening's workshop on fundraising. Given the impending new high school and the need to raise significant monies to support the type of facility that we're looking for, fundraising is needed and has been planned for and anticipated. But there are policies in place, in our current policy, that may need some revision or at least need review so that the committee understands where we're headed and that gives the superintendent and the fundraising committee some direction on what we're looking for and what we would accept, what would be valid. We don't want Seagram's sponsoring our gym, let's say.
I'm looking at you, Tom, going, "Where are we going with this?" Okay.
So, we have a discussion this evening on fundraising.
All right, so we're going to do two things. One, we're going to get a big picture of what this is going to take. And then, two, you're going to do an activity. Yes, we all love activities. To dive into policies and talk about the pros and cons because you haven't read all of these, so I'm going to have each group read a policy that has impact and discuss how this would impact what I told you earlier. Okay? So, we're going to do some pre-learning and then we're going to do some small group and then we're going to come back, whole group, and report out. Okay?
Remember, she's a teacher.
All right. So, what I'm handing out right now is a pyramid that we went over at the building committee meeting, at the last building committee meeting. So, some of you have already heard this before, but I'm just going to repeat it. And then we'll jump into policies and have a discussion on those. So, to start with, the fundraising policy obviously has been on the radar for, as soon as it was being spoken about, on how to reduce the tax commitment, the local tax dollars for this project. And so, in consultation, and Tom did attend some of the meetings, we met with Chip Morrison, we met with Barbara Trafton, we met with Mary Sylvester, I've met with Becky Conrad. So, people in the community that have raised large amounts of money just to give- get their expertise and take some notes and listen on what this is going to take. The other thing is, it was Mary Sylvester suggested a book that Adam and I and Tom have a copy of, which is How to Raise a Million Dollars or More, and tips on that. So, part of our learning is really big picture and small picture. So, obviously, the community is anxious, "What are you doing fundraising? What are you doing fundraising?" And some of- so, that's what I'm going to talk about, the importance of what comes first, second, and third. So, you notice in the pyramid, there's a top, then the middle, and the bottom, right? And I put the goal as $3 million. We know that there's been a lot of discussion on three to five million, so you up those numbers. But looking at raising 3 million, the top pyramid has to raise the bulk of the funding. And that is really securing lead and large donors. That's six-figure donors, people who are really stepping up and putting a large sum of money because it's going to take that to get to the 3 million. So, it's asking people, alumni, businesses, foundations, people that are known to give, philanthropists, people from the community. Those people being reached out to, contacted, having one-on-one conversations around what they're willing to give, why they would be willing to give, and give some sense to them of the importance of them contributing to this project as a way to give back, inspire, and take the lead to encourage others to give a large sum. That is not done publicly. That is not done by a wide variety of individuals because somebody's got to be the keeper of the message, the keeper of the understanding of the message. And so, at this point, I have been doing that. I have met with some individuals and I have cultivating. It's called cultivating because people, you're not going to sit down with them once and think they're going to give you a million dollars. You're going to have to do it over several meetings. You need to do it wherever they're willing to do it, if it means flying into Chicago because the person lives there. And if you want this many dollars, you may have to fly in to have a discussion with them. Conference calling, meeting at a restaurant on a Sunday, whatever it takes to continue the relationship and having them feel like this is important and they want to be part of it. That's $2 million. And like Bob, you sent names. Those names went on our list as possible cultivation. And so, that's what we're taking right now is whenever I meet with somebody or somebody says, "Have you considered asking this person?", we put them on the list. Okay? Then, then, and you see, that's been happening, I put March and to November, so really pushing in the next few months of really seeing if we can get some lead donors. We do have a lead donor right now. I'm not going to say it publicly at this point. And I'm working to cultivate other lead donors to join that person. And when it becomes more advantageous to announce that, then we will do that. Okay? In the mid-level is where you're getting high-yield, it's high-yield fundraisers in the sense of where can you draw the most money. So, for example, there's been a lot of discussion on naming rights. So, as I explained to the building committee, I have put $1 million on the naming rights for the auditorium because people were- people I was cultivating asked about the performing arts. And so, I put $1 million on the performing arts at this point. Also, the advice is, once we set those naming rights, we don't move off of them. So, if somebody says, "Well, I would like to name-" you know, we decide a classroom is $1,000. Well, I want to give 500. Can you- can I please do- no. It's a thou- you have to hold to what you say as long, you know, and if something goes unnamed, it goes unnamed. Okay? Because this is important and this is what we're depending on for our fundraising effort. So, if we say 900,000, part of the fundraising committee is going to work on how, what are the price tags on naming rights in order to get those dollars? So, we have to talk that through. How much is an auditorium seat going to be? If it's going to be $500 and we have 1,200 seats, that could yield how much money? If we're going to do the gym floor, the current gym floor and sell pieces of the gym floor, we have to decide how many pieces, how many dollars, how much would that yield? Okay? So, these are the high-yield items that you are counting on big dollars coming from that.
Let me back up just a second.
Sure.
When you said the naming rights for the Performing Arts Center is $1 million, that goes up to the top of the triangle, right?
Yes, correct. Yes. That would, that would be an example of, right, because we're really trying to go for 5 million, remember? So, I, right, you have a large stadium and you have, the largest space you have are the Performing Arts Center and the stadium.
Right.
So, that's where I started with the performing arts.
Yep.
And when we meet as a fundraising committee, we're going to really have to talk through what's appropriate, what have others, you know, doing some research, what have other schools charged or, you know, asked for contribution for like the seats, the classrooms, the stage, the gymnasium, you know? We can get some ballpark and then we're going to have to say this is, and then publish it, right? We're going to publish what those are and so people know. And then, we'll probably have to have personal meetings with people who are considering a certain level. Okay? Did that help, Alfreda?
Yeah, it does.
Okay. Then, the bottom one is those, everyone has opportunity to contribute at any level. So, that, it's similar to what the City of Auburn is doing, selling a brick. Okay? So, it would be similar into those type of things. How do we get everyone involved that even if I have $50 or I have $500 or I have $25, I have a way to contribute in some fashion. I put $100,000. That might be too high, but that was a ballpark is the committee. But you want that to be almost your finale. You know, we're at 2.8 million, $9 million, or we're at 3, 5, $4 million and we're trying to get to here. You know, it's that last push, fill the gap, every, you know, we're doing these fun fundraisers, way to get involved, and that's, that's filling the gap. You don't go there first because what you don't want to do is you don't want to have somebody who could have given $50,000, give $500 for a brick and you never asked me to give more and I've given. So, you, you want to make sure those people who are, you're expecting to want to be contributors or philanthropists, that they get the respect and the cultivating that they, they are used to, frankly, they're used to getting and not say, "Well, they just went out and raised $50,000. They must, that must be what they're looking for because they held a spaghetti dinner and they did." You know, those come at the end. And that's what's hard for people in the community to understand, I think, is they're waiting for you to kick off and do something where I can give my $25. And we're not there yet. But we're going to get a plan out so they know, "When is my moment? When am I coming in?"
But I've got $100 that's burning in my pocket.
Yeah.
Can I give it to you, Katie?
Absolutely.
Right now?
Definitely.
Okay.
Bob's been giving me, giving-
I know.
Donating, you know? So, yes, we, the legacy fund button will be on the website so that if somebody asks you, "I have $100", whatever, yep, we have, we have a donation button on our website. There's other times, like, there's a Facebook donate button that you can do that we will, that will probably be in the low level where there'll be a Facebook run for a month where people can click on the donate on Facebook. We're seeing that it's tax-free. Is that what I read to you, Adam, about the Facebook tax-free one that they, some, I think Facebook or, there's a group-
Was it a no fee?
Yeah, like a no fee. You wouldn't get a fee for, and it runs on Facebook if you do a donate button. So, those type of things, we can talk through at the fundraiser committee levels, when would we run that? When would we run this? So that we have a map out of the plan. What's going to happen when? Okay? So, I tried to put kind of dates with, which is, you know, we're trying to secure large donations, then we're going to be doing that mid-level, let's do some naming rights, try to push that for six months, can, can we get some naming rights? And then, what are we doing that for, really, the other half of the year? What are we doing, you know, for the next eight months for those low, not lower level, but way that everyone can get in and say that they contributed. So, that's kind of big picture. Now, that's in my mind with Adam's feedback with that, you know, that, that's a small group, you know, getting consultant, kind of talking through people with expertise have kind of warned, you know, warning, "Do not go do this first. You will never reach through a million dollars." Yeah. You want to do this, you want, and it does take time. It takes time. And, you know, we've talked, I know Bonnie's mentioned and stuff, do we get somebody on board to help out? We have, we don't have funding right now in our budget for that. And whether that's something we decide to do, we'll have to discuss that. And it's almost like when we hired Marshall Communications and we paid $14,000 for him to help push the referendum. So, you have to think, a fundraiser that's going to work for 18 months and stuff, they're going to expect, and then they're going to expect us to execute what they're proposing. So, if they run the fundraising committee with me and with others, a board member hopefully will be part of it, then we have to work what they tell you to work type of thing. They're the experts, you've got to listen to the experts on it. So, Bonnie, you had a question?
I had, I had a comment, actually.
Sure.
This past weekend, I had the pleasure of being in a very nice gentleman's company. And he made the comment that, not my husband-
We're all thinking.
And he's nice, but he's-
He is a nice gentleman.
The comment was, "Money begets money."
Yes, exactly.
Okay, so, if you take Tom Kendall, who's got $40 million he wants to give to us, and he does give it to us, but he probably has three people that can top him or match him-
Exactly.
-on it. But they're not going to match it from, for you. They're going to say, Tom needs to go out and say, "Hey, Brian, come on." You know, da-da-da-da-da.
Yes.
And then you go and you tell three more people and you collect that way on it. Especially, and this guy has raised a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
And he works for a very, very big nonprofit. And he said, and I remember your dad, that money begets money.
Exactly.
On it. So, if you're hitting, if you're, I hate that word, if you're soliciting a major donor, and he's major, or she is major-
Yeah.
-then you're going to say, "Will you help do this?"
Exactly.
On it.
Yeah, exactly.
So, that's, that's my one comment. And my next concern, I have a concern, is that you are a wonderful superintendent of schools.
Yeah.
You are wonderful as a superintendent of schools. And you do really good things for our system. I don't want you to get burnt out.
Right.
And I don't want you to take too much on your plate on it. And I'm concerned that this is going to, all of a sudden, you're going to go to the main tourist and be their major, you know, solicitor. But I'm just, I-
Absolutely.
I don't want-
Yes.
What I'm saying also is that, yes, the school is necessary to raise money, but you were hired as a superintendent of schools.
Right.
And that's your concern. So, that's, that's my concern and that's my comment, so.
The other hand, she may be so good at this, she'll say, "Why do I need to be superintendent?"
Well, that's what I just said. That's why I thought that maybe she'd go to the main tourist industry and be the top solicitor.
For example, how much do you know the Norway Savings Bank paid for the Albany Arena? And Andes Skargren Bank paid for the Coliseum? Do you have any idea?
I do know. And it's going to come to my brain. I'm going to say 60,000 around, approximately around that.
Really? Man, that's cheap.
That was it?
I thought it was 250. It wasn't?
I think it was over each year.
Over each year.
Each year for a certain number of years. Yes. So, it was like 50,000.
Have a worksheet that we presented at the last meeting and-
What, do you remember, Alfreda? I know.
Before.
Mark Goslin, Mark Goslin and I talked. He was another person I talked to about what, you know, support and so forth. So, but before we get into details, because some of what you're discussing, when you talk about policy and, and coming up with some guidelines, I think, Bonnie, to your thing about me, and I totally agree with you, I think it's going to matter who's in the fundraising committee.
Yes.
Do you know what I mean?
Yes.
I think that we've got to make sure, I have people who have asked to be on the fundraising committee, which is awesome, and I really appreciate those folks. And so, when we have our first meeting, we're going to need to talk about how many people need to be around this table, who's really going to push on getting the plans, who's going to take minutes, who's going to write a letter, you know? I think it's going to be the work of the group and you've got to have people who are willing to-
Right.
-do that, to do the work. And that's what, that's when it's going to come, the rubber's going to hit the-
Right.
Yeah. Okay. So, thinking about things like, like Tom said about Seagrim's or going to Andes Skargren Bank or Norway Savings Bank. So, I have three policies and, and this is good because it's two, two, and two. This is perfect. So, what I want you to do is you and your partner are going to read the policy. Then, you're going to think about what are the conflicts that might come in and what Katie just presented, or what you've heard in the community, or what might be out there that we're going to have to muddle through. Naming of facilities and grounds.
That's a, that's a policy on that?
It is a policy, yeah.
Yeah. Memorials and testimonies. So, there's just, I wanted you to read some things and you might say, "There's no conflict." And you might say, "Oh, there's some major conflict." All right? So, what do you and, you and Brian want to take on advertising? All right, you and Brian are doing advertising-
Okay.
-in the school. We'll get, make sure everybody has a copy of all of them, but I want you to work on that one right now. Tom and Alfreda, how about you read through memorials and testimonials and see if there's anything that was-
Speaking of memorials, when I was in North Conway last week, they had memorial bricks on the sidewalk.
Have to raise our hand.
Okay. Right. With the bells. Bonnie, you're going to do naming of the-
Yeah, I know. See, what does this one say?
And for the bells. I also think he's the guy who gave the million bucks to St. dorms.
Oh, I don't know about that, but it's possible. It is very possible. So, okay, that's the same.
Because his son went to St. Dorms.
Yeah. But he doesn't want that, you know, if he is a-
Right. And Cross Insurance already has the Civic Center in Portland and in Bangor. But they still got plenty of more dough.
That's right. Yeah.
You've got to run.
I'm still thinking about it.
Get nothing. I'd be so bored.
Are you kidding me? I've spent my life spending doing meetings. I've got so much on my plate now.
Like if we're going for the big donors. Say the big donors.
Yeah, that's right.
But this is-
It's going away.
You don't want us the vending machines.
Leave in Horse Feathers, which is a restaurant and a bar. I noticed they had memorials on the bar.
Oh, that's nice.
Yeah. Sponsored by Coke.
Yeah.
Sponsored by Maco.
CBD or whatever that stuff is.
They should have one of those local Malone.
Or like even like-
I'm not for a few more years.
Another good example of this is like, you know, when you go to like the Sea Dogs, you see all those-
Everywhere.
All those boats and boys all over each, you know.
Yeah, Katie, I was also in Horse Feathers in North Conway. I see in the bar, they have memorials on the bar.
Across the board.
Yeah. So, the question is, what, what do we allow? I don't know, what, what's appropriate for that?
Yeah, because I mean, something as simple as, offending is the wrong word, but something as simple as like-
Didn't you see what they did for the asylum seekers in Portland on 1st of July?
That's right.
I mean, it's one of those words.
They gave them a barbecue and a standing ovation at the- Symphony, symphony before the fireworks. A nightmare, Bob McDonnell wrote a letter.
I know, I know. They've been very welcoming.
Absolutely. You know, she's, you know, you're getting that same-
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. You're in a predicament.
Or, or, you know, you know, yeah, Poland Springs is the top, but let's say there's other ones in the state of New York, Dasani, you know, in the competition.
Yeah, well, Dasani's cool.
Dasani's cool, but, and they're not obviously a main base, but, you know. And if you let, you know, somebody like Dasani, then you get, you know, you get all the other ones.
Oh, yeah. And they want access.
Or even like, you know, the challenge with the advertising is even like a restaurant. You know, say, say you do, I don't know, Buffalo Lollies. Well, they may at that one point in time post something, you know, really bad politically on Twitter.
Yeah, that's right.
You know, you get into-
Yeah, so it's, it's advertising. So, part of, part of that is, you know, the naming rights, if you, you can't put up a Seagram Seven, you know, auditorium type thing. So, it's who, who would you attract naming rights from is part of that question.
And this seems like this would be in the, like, the top 2/3.
Well, you see, it could be, but if someone wants to put up a sign on the base, you can put up white cards.
Flags.
Yeah, yeah. Whatever you want. A billboard in the back. Something in the back. Let me see, do you allow, what do you allow, you know, if you're going to go that route, if they're going to buy a brick? What are you going to allow to put on the brick?
Even, even some writing.
Yeah.
When it's writing, when it's graphical.
So, you've got to consider all that stuff in terms of-
Well, you end up, you end up having to-
That is a problem.
Yeah.
Right.
Construction is the tough part. But then, when you're out there meeting, Katie's meeting with somebody here, sitting there, what are you looking for?
That's right.
You know, are you looking for just the name?
Your name.
ABC Park or ABC, whoever from the mainland or-
We can make it. Your name.
Yeah.
An individual's name. That's all right.
Yeah.
But if you want to name it for your corporate entity, that might be a problem, depending on what the corporate entity is. So-
Best name was.
No, exactly.
Bad.
Or bad, you know, bad.
Reputation, you can have.
No, bad.
So, you've got to-
We had a nice event last night that you-
Three years from now, like maybe four, five years.
Yeah. One of the things is that some of it is non-permanent.
Auburn.
You're putting something in that has a fine reputation now.
It was two hours.
But it's a non-permanent structure, you know?
Pretty close.
As long as you've got ability to remove it. It's not, it's not on the headstone granite, you know, carved in granite. It's, you know, one of the portals of the school that you couldn't take down.
As you're doing good.
Well, it is. I had, I lost the alternator. Probably like-
If I have a stadium, you know, it's probably concrete.
So, what happened, you know, if you're being that money-
It's going to be long back.
Donate a million dollars.
I turned off all the lights.
Something, something parked, you know, where it is.
That's right.
It's going to be permanent, absolutely.
It's those considerations that start falling in when you start looking at it.
A lot of grades. It's not black and white.
Yeah, it's a lot of grades.
It's very great.
And it's, and it's opinion. I mean, you know, your opinion of what's clean and things in the mine may be different.
Absolutely.
You know, and then you've got more issues.
I think, I figured my-
Green company, green water.
Maybe I'm going to find the place to put the alternate if they've got one. If I'm finding out, he had asked questions. Why did he bring that tow truck out? And when I got there, he looks at me and he says, "It's all..."
That's when it gets real tricky.
It's got a lot of conflict.
Everywhere, everywhere you turn, everywhere you turn.
That matches your car. It's really done in less than an hour.
And that's great.
It was a miracle.
Donor. Polish people donate. They're willing to support you.
In the middle of the road.
What do you, can you allow them to, in the school?
Four lanes.
To promote their product.
Put it in beautiful.
Most seems like-
A gentleman came from out of nowhere, he says, "Put it in the truck, he'll push you out of, out of the road."
We don't even have vending machines with names on them in the school, do we anymore? I don't think we have a Pepsi machine or-
I know we don't have.
Yeah, I don't think we do.
Don't have soda, but do the, any of the machines have vendor names?
I don't think they do.
We were in Hampshire, it was Pet.
Oh, I'm trying to think of the one, um-
It was Pet.
I was, the minute I hit, I went down, I think I know what July fourth, the day before July fourth.
I think it has a different name. Sobie or-
Like it might say Aquafina or something.
Yeah, 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 I don't think it's, I don't think we've got any soda ones.
I don't think you'll see Pepsi or Coke.
I think, you're right, I think it is Aquafina.
I think Sobie, I think I remember Sobie, at least at one point, was in there.
Probably whatever is displayed on it has to meet the same standards of what we can sell.
Still skiing at Mammoth, um-
They're still skiing, I know.
Still skiing.
They're still skiing out of Mammoth. They could ski all year long out there, I think, this year.
They did till August fourth, two years ago.
Yeah. My daughter did a, uh, summer out there. And she was doing, uh, trail rides at Mammoth. And, uh, she was out, you know, on a trail ride, and there were these poles that were sticking up about as high as the ceiling on, on the trail, and she asked one of the other guys, she was first year, "What are those for?" "They mark the roads when the snow gets high." It's fifty feet up. So are we allowed to move on, or are we-
Yeah, if you're, if you've already read that, you might as well move on.
Okay.
While you wait for the other groups. You can read, you're, you have the other two there if you wanna read them.
Okay, so here are the other two.
Obsession tonight, right?
No. There's the other two. The other two, if you wanna just move on.
The other one that's gonna play into this is the student wellness.
Um, Michelle said most of it's in here, the drug alcohol is the big one.
There's a section, foods and beverage marketing.
I think it's covered in the advertising one.
Advertising has a lot of that.
This gets into the, it has to meet the smart snack.
Oh.
Okay.
Have to be aware of that, something to be aware of as we continue our discussions.
This one's actually-
Actually some trouble. This process. You got an individual- Are you just gonna say yes?
Well, you know, down here, like, right, it's both, like, I don't know, but naming it after a name around, you know, like, you have to be, for like a better word, retirement or dead, for five years to be considered, or you have to be a very large donor to be considered. Yeah, I think it's certainly a minor conflict.
Yeah, yeah. You gotta look at it.
I think if you're upfront with a large donor and say, you know, what are you looking for?
Let's see if there's a check in.
Put them through that process without having, you know-
This is, you gotta have a committee and you gotta do this. They have, you gotta have representatives, board of directors, everyone else. I suppose you're-
Said there was too much.
They would already realize-
I sent a check for five dollars and opposed it to cost a dollar fifteen. Says I'll give it back to him, so they're giving you a check back, so if I wanted the check back.
What's, what's, what's good about it though is that it does cover the grounds of like, okay, you know, like-
It does, because he's a living person.
What, he's a living person, yeah.
Can't name it after, for minimum five years to not get that. So, he's a living person, he wants his name on it.
Right here, like, if you have a living people who have outstanding contribution, it may also be considered. So you can be living, and you'll be considering laws.
It's not living, it's not-
As long as it's outstanding contribution. So it covers, I mean, it covers retirement and dead and-
I suppose we can get him on again.
It also has, it also has the coverage of, you know, it could be renamed, meaning, you know, it's not, that's, that's-
Yeah, yeah.
That'd be one of the deterrents, I think. You know, I'm a large donor and I know that I'm paying this money.
It's gotta be permanent.
Want it to be permanent, you know, not, you know, um, you know, that- You know, if I'm coming, if I'm coming in, I say, you know, I donate a million dollars, you know, I wanna know that it's gonna be there for the-
Yeah.
Twenty years or fifty years coming back and, you know. That might be a deterrent for some of the bigger ones.
You gotta be, that's why you gotta be careful. Or you've got to, you've got to adjust the policy is what it comes down to.
Yeah.
To allow for things.
A lot of things you don't think of.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of, a lot of big things and a lot of like, just these little, little things that are like, oh, what a-
Guyer Jim, isn't, isn't it Guyer Jim down at Yarra? Or Cumberland, Cumberland, Guyer Jim, I miss, I'm not familiar, but then they redid it. That's what I'm trying to remember. They had a, they always had a sign out front, Guyer Jim, and I'm trying to think if it's still there, I drove by there the other day.
At where?
At Cumberland. An individual's name.
It's just there, but I couldn't tell you if there was a name on it.
Yeah. They redid it.
Adam, something you could check on is, you know, like Fernmassey just got recognized and the names of the fields and stuff. I wonder, did they give money or did they just choose the name? I think in Lewiston, they, uh, where the gymnasium was called after Fernmassey or, and then-
This one's interesting.
Be interesting, did-
Make this memorial a testimony.
Or did they just have, people wanted to name it and they-
Yeah, I can find out.
Are you looking?
I am, just looking to see, I gotta put this main in there, I guess.
What I have to do is pull down the Joe Paterno statue, that's what, that's the situation you don't wanna be in.
Oh, yeah, abso- absolutely. Cause he's gonna be an icon for, you know.
I'll give them, tell them, you're almost done.
One of the three doesn't seem so bad. This is the memorial, it's like if, um, you know, sun moss or something.
He said it's not been, it's died.
Oh, really?
Flags, you know.
It was a couple days ago.
No, it doesn't seem-
It amazed me, I mean, I knew him when I was a cat, hit my deal in the sixties. Then I didn't know, said in his picture where he was proud of me, remember they ate for thirty years? I said I had no idea, my brother came by today, he said he had no idea. First guy I ever caddied for, caddied nine, was to give me a ten cent tip, I must not have been very good.
So, let, let's start, um, Tom and Brian, you had advertising in schools? So what did you discuss and what are some things that came up for you? And we're gonna take, Michelle's gonna take notes.
The, uh, the issue gets very complicated when you start talking about products in terms of advertising, and advertising generally is trying to promote a product or a service. A service may be more innocuous, but a product is, is pretty identifiable and carries with it reputation, suitability, you know, what, whether it's candy or whether it's alcohol or whatever, it tells you what it is. Uh, so it's very identifiable. Unfortunately, you can take something that's very acceptable, clean, like Poland Spring Water. Not to pick on them, maybe I should use Dasante or someone like that, but, uh, and think that that's a very positive product and one that no one would have an issue with. But I quickly jumped to the problem with plastics in the ocean and the, uh, you know, spring waters and things around the world are contributing tremendously to that problem. So there would be a group, the environmental group, that would certainly have an issue with that as a, an appropriate sponsor. And unfortunately, you're going to find that conflict with a lot of products. So the corporate, uh, image and the products represented by that can become controversial, controversial, even though you don't think of them initially that way. They have a very positive public image, uh, but that may not be universal. And it's going to be important to consider the universal aspect of any, uh, advertising that may be done so that you're not alienating or creating a, a discussion point, I'll put it, within the schools. So it's not at all clear cut, it's nothing, uh, it is not very straightforward when you start saying, "I'm gonna expose our students, I'm gonna expose our community." And basically, we're saying we endorse it by putting it in the schools. And that, that is gonna merit a great deal of consideration, a great deal of discussion to ferret out those that are, that are acceptable and work well for the entire population. Could something add, Brian?
Yeah, oh, can I ask a question?
Hey, you can't add anything yet.
Can I, can I ask a question?
Sure.
Okay, we have a, um, we have Procter and Gamble here. Okay? And they're very orientated to the community, employ a lot of people. But I don't want the products that they have there, I don't want that in my, in my school. I don't want the auditorium to be Procter and Gamble because to me, I think of-
Tampas?
Yes. Right, exactly. So, I mean, if you, if you're taking something as, as simple as, um, Poland Spring Water or Dasante or- Dasante is actually, I think, a Coca-Cola bar.
That's Coca-Cola.
So if you're taking something as similar as that, then, or as safe as that, appearing to be safe as that, what are you doing with tappets? Or Procter and Gamble or anything like that?
I understand, that's why it's not an easy question.
So, what do you say, no thank you to the money?
Well, there's one thing to accept a donation where they may be listed in a donation, you know.
You can allow, this is advertising.
But-
What would you allow in the school to put them up on the scoreboard?
You know, would you accept a donation from Procter and Gamble on Poland Spring? Yes, but you don't wanna name something, perhaps.
You don't wanna have Procter and Gamble up on the scoreboard, or, you know, or-
Pepsi up there. I'm really sorry.
Say, what if I'm willing to give you a million dollars, would you put my name on there?
Exactly, would you?
Well, that would be, that's the discussion.
That's the discussion.
Right, that's what we're talking about is-
We don't support sugary drinks.
Because I, we don't want people, you don't want me soliciting from a company that's, and then says, well, yeah, I want, you know, it, it's more the solicit, would you be willing to donate, but there's no naming. We just, we will list you in the, um, you know, honoring you as a donor, but not name a facility. That's what we would have to discuss, is where, what are those guidelines that will, what's gonna be acceptable, not acceptable, is really what we have to hash out. Brian, what did you-
Well, one of the other things that we were talking about was the fact that, you know, a company may have a great image now, but in three years from now, they don't. Or, eh, you know, eh, with companies nowadays, social media, you know, it's very easy to, you know, go right side, left side, doesn't matter which, but, you know, and that'll throw a lot of people off as well, you know, so, you know, it's gonna deter people, you know, from, you know, whether it's Pepsi, whether it's Coke, whether it's Procter and Gamble, whether it's, you know, Mr. Smith, it's, you know, it's still, the, the image now doesn't mean it's the same image five years from now.
And in our policy, it says it can be changed, that naming-
Well, that's, and that's one of the other things that we were, that I mentioned to Tom was, you know, if I'm a large donor and I come in and I say, I wanna, I wanna donate two million dollars. I want it for the long term, you know, I want it twenty years, fifty years from now, I don't want it to be, I don't want that clause of being renamed would deter me as a large donor, because I'm like, well, I give you the one and a half million, five years from now, we change donor, you know, change names. And, you know, I think that, that's the other challenge. But there also needs to be a clause in there that says, you know-
If you do something illegal.
If you do something illegal, we, we can, you know, we can bump you out or something like that, but-
Let's talk a little bit about, um, Apple products. I mean, we are heavily, heavily involved in Apple products. And we use, uh, these products as part of our curriculum. There is no, I mean, we would not want that to be, uh, put up there as, we're an Apple school or an Apple school system. If they, you know, they give us grant monies and we use the grant monies to provide services, that kind of thing. But, you know, certainly would be very inappropriate to name anything after Bill Gates or Apple or that kind of thing. I, I don't think we have any business, um, advertising in schools. You know, I don't think this is a place to advertise. This is, we're not in the business of advertising for companies. I cannot think of one instance when we would do that.
So, so your stand would be, no company should be solicited?
No.
Oh, I don't agree with that.
Advertising for what?
For naming rights.
Naming rights, I think naming rights is fine, but not putting up advertisements in the schools.
Advertisements.
But naming right, but naming right is an advertisement. You don't agree with that?
No, I don't think it's an advertisement.
So if it was the Apple Stadium, that would be okay with you?
Yes.
Okay.
But if Apple, I, I kinda hear you on this, but if Apple wanted to give us a million dollars for the technical aspects of the stadium?
Of the auditorium.
Or the auditorium, either way, because it's gonna be, there's gonna be computers used wherever. So, that, right, so to me, that would not be necessarily a naming right from Apple, but that would be a large legacy donor on it.
That's right, right, they would be listed under legacy donor.
Right, I don't wanna take not solicit businesses, cause then we're not ever gonna get to where we need to get.
No, no, that's true, that's true.
But I think you bring up a good point off here, how do we define advertising? We'd have to go back and say, what, how do we define advertising? Cause your perception of advertising and your perception of advertising may be different.
So is the, is the, uh, the cooler that's dispensing water at the middle school that has Sobie on it, is that acceptable or not?
That's advertising.
Right.
Because you're purchasing something from them. They're not donating it, we're purchasing from that company.
So soliciting.
Any product's gonna have its own name on it.
But is, but that's allowing advertising, because it's a permanent sign or a semi-permanent sign.
Perfect, I, I think it's perfect, is, um, if you went to Mount Blue and you walked in that front door, there was the auditorium, there was the performing arts, and it said, "The Richard Bjorn Auditorium." And I bet there's not three people here that know who Richard Bjorn is. You should know who he is. You're from Farmington.
Yeah, from Farmington, I was principal there.
Richard Bjorn is Kai's Insurance. So he gave twice, big chunks of money to the auditorium. But his names are not, his name is on it, not-
Not Kai's Insurance.
The company.
Not Kai's Insurance on it. So I think that if we solicit, we solicit Tom Platts, Thomas and James Platts Auditorium. Or, you know, something that, that doesn't say Platts Associates on it, or, or something like that.
Person, the person who made the donation.
Right.
And there's always a person behind all of that.
Right.
I, I keep the, keep the discussion, I would frame according to policy. We've got policies and you bring, you bring this up, okay? So we need, we may need to modify or add to the policies in order to, to bring it within the scope so that, yeah, it becomes a Tom Platts and Jim Platts Auditorium or some, or that sort. How do you not have it named, you know, Platts Associates, but you allow Tom and Jim to name it within it?
Name after their parents.
Yeah, whatever.
You know, or it's the Richard E. Kendall Auditorium. Well, we all know who Dick Kendall was, we know what he did. We know what he did. But the auditorium is donated, given by his family in his name, not in one right or, or whatever business.
Yeah. But does your policy allow for, either restrict that or allow for it? That's the, that becomes the question.
Well, right now, your policy allows-
That.
Advertising.
Allows advertising if the names, logos are advertising, uh, if the programming, equipment or services can be clearly shown to be of significant benefit to the school program.
Correct.
So there's judgment call involved in that, in your policy.
So you have advertising and versus, what's the other word I'm looking for? You know, the advertising or naming rights?
Memorials.
Memorial, memorial remembrances, you know, that kind of thing.
Well, let's shift to, so you brought up some really good points on advertising because we're not going to have a lot, we're going to have to probably meet again on, on stuff. So Alfrieda and Bob, you did memorials and testimonies. What did you see there that you want to share with the group?
Uh, well, this one's kind of cut dry and, if you want, Bob. Um, number, uh, C, the guidelines under C, that one there. I, I find it, this was very, as a principal, it was very rare that we were allowed to lower the flag for just any individual, had to be a notable individual, uh, in terms of memorializing someone.
Well, this says flags may be lowered only in accordance with state federal law. We can't lower the flag unless-
Right, exactly.
Or directed.
Right.
Yep.
So that's what I'm saying, if any, and, and this is very clearly stated. So it couldn't be just for anybody. So that one there, you know, that's very clear cut. The one that we were looking at is E, the building principal may approve request memorializing an individual or event in the school yearbooks, uh, at graduation ceremonies and other district activities. Uh, what comes to mind is, um, a student who has passed away or a teacher who has passed away. And, um, you know, I know that that happens, that occurs, and, uh, for example, this year, have we, have we lost any students who may not have been memorialized? I mean, I'm looking at, uh, is it possible that somebody may be overlooked in, in this if we allow this and that feelings would be hurt, people would feel, um, that their significant person in their life had passed away and was not memorialized in the yearbook? So it has to be, it has to be done so that it's regularly, it happens on a regular basis or every year, there is a section there for those that you remember who have passed away. So that way you don't forget or omit someone because that's, that would be the problem with this, is that if we omitted somebody and it was a regular routine, uh, from yearbook to yearbook.
Right, so did you look through the lens of fundraising? Because that's, I, I hear your thing on memoriali, you know, so talking further about the policy in general.
Right.
But did you see any of the, like, G and H to me really speak to the fundraising is that if somebody says, I want a naming right, like you mentioned Bill Gates, you wouldn't accept Bill Gates. Okay, so, you know, is there going to be a community member that people might say, whoa, that person isn't a upstanding citizen in our minds or whatever, you know? I think that's what this, and I, I know, Tom, you had, you went through this a little bit with the naming of the track.
Track, yeah.
There was a lot of discussion on naming of the track, um, because there were different groups that felt one name didn't represent the track team. There were several people who had impact on the track. Tom, remember, do you remember that? Because I do, I remember that coming up. What?
It was Emily Fletcher.
Yeah, it was Emily Fletcher was brought up and then someone said, well-
Yeah, what about?
What about this person who passed away and this person? Why is it the Emily Fletcher track? So I think-
Her name in the track?
Right, so we, I think that was adding to guidelines is, and when someone's giving a check in the name of someone who may have passed away, is there going to be guidelines around, around that in the naming?
So you're looking at G and H, in terms of G, these are items that are given, which could be personal items or that kind of thing? How does that relate to a check?
Well, if you consider items a check, or it may be an item-
A value of some sort.
Someone's jersey, I have a jersey I want donated to go in the foyer.
We donated a flag.
Yeah. Yes.
Yeah, and H, uh, school committee approval for a display of a plaque or portrait.
Mm-hmm.
Is there a value added to that?
Right.
Yeah.
So if somebody makes the donation and wants a statue?
Flag, yeah.
A flag, a tree, a-
We have a statue now, right, that is to rename.
Right.
So those are the types of things that, that will make our donation with this, a plaque or whatever.
I mean, it seems, it seems complete in terms of what the possibilities are that can be donated in memory of someone.
Mm-hmm.
And if that be the case, of course, with it is a little, a little macro that says who this is in memory of and the year.
Yeah, we, we have had that where, um, you, you, there was a naming of a tree at Fairview and the family came and asked, show, showed us what the plaque was going to be, where the tree was going to be and so forth, and the school committee had approved.
Yep.
So we'll just have to talk about, if we get some of these type of items, do they come through the school, you know, the, um-
I think a process, just the pro, what's the, for all of these, what's the process?
Exactly.
Who, who takes charge of that?
Correct.
And who gets it started?
Committee.
Right.
Who gets it started so that it gets, because I know I, I remember doing trees before in previous schools for teachers who have passed away, things like that. So I think the process of how we take in and get this information to all those involved and the protocol is the same.
Yeah. Okay, good, thank you. Pat and Bonnie, what about, yours was a big one, naming of facilities and grounds.
Well, we had a discussion about, and, and my feeling, I don't know what Bonnie feels, I think she agrees with me. This is a process for naming a school. We're going to put a new school out on Center Street and how are we going to name it? What I don't see in here is, and there's a process for that, what I don't see in here is naming rights. Naming rights are different than a com, a, a community group getting together to name a school. So to me, we need a policy, for example, I give you a million dollars for the naming rights. Then you're going to make me go through all of this?
Right, right, that's what we, we've talked about.
And then at the end, at the end of my- Change it, and are you going to change it?
At the end of my million dollars, and you and I have talked, you're going to say, oh, wait a minute, it needs to go to the community, it needs to go to the-
Exactly.
-school, whatever. And I'm going to say, take my money back.
So to me, this, to me, there, and, and we talked, Michelle had some input about the legality of things and, but to me, there has to be a definition of naming rights and it either has to be reflected in this policy or another policy.
Or, or a procedure, because it does say superintendent will develop a process for recommending names for newly constructed schools, existing or new facilities or part of a facility. So that's part of the discussion, I think definitely will be at the, probably the fundraising committee as a draft to the school committee, which is all the things you're saying with, um, you know, what's the authorization path, what's the guidelines for, um, the naming, the name, size of the don, yeah, I mean, there's a lot to consider with that, absolutely. Are they in good standing, are they, yeah.
I mean, you know, I-
Yeah.
I could give you a million dollars and want to name it after, I don't know, pick somebody, I won't say anybody's name, but, you know, and-
Right.
And half the community says no.
Exactly.
So it's, that's what this says, but naming rights, when I hand you my check, am I making it just a donation or am I getting to say it's the Pat Gaudier Auditorium?
Right.
Or whatever?
And we-
That has to be understood when you're going in to talk to them.
And that's what we said is-
Right, to talk to people, yes, absolutely.
Right, so when the committee or you or whomever goes in, you're going to say, Tom, would you like to have the naming rights of whatever?
Yeah.
Of the auditorium? And so you say, yes, I will do that. So it's going to say the Richard Kendall Auditorium on it, or the Marion Richard Kendall Auditorium on it. And so then you figure that's a done deal.
Okay.
You're going to give your money.
That's right, that's right. Then it goes back to the committee and they say, no, I will-
They say, no, I didn't, you know, I didn't like the way he parted his hair or whatever.
But then look at the last paragraph. Look at the last paragraph that says, then there could be a renaming, so what, legally, what happens then?
Right.
And we don't want there to be renaming, and I think you guys said it over here- I don't either, I think once you named it, you named it.
Well, it says, if the current name is obsolete or inappropriate-
So how can it be obsolete if somebody contributed to the history of this community?
No, I'm saying that pa, right, I'm saying the paragraph's there, it's what I think Adam brought up, Joe Pat, uh, whatever.
Paterno.
Paterno. At the time, they built a beautiful statue, he was in good standing.
Exactly.
Well, now he's not in good standing, his, it's coming down. So there may be a name we all accept and then suddenly something happens and we say, ooh, that is not, no longer an appropriate name, we're going to rename it even though you gave whatever. So I think that comes back to somebody said, I think Brian had a clause-
Yeah, they did.
Has to be given to the family that, you know, as long as it remains in good standing and, you know, whatever, we would have to, that would be part of the guideline, absolutely.
There'd have to be some strong guidelines around that because that's, it's, it's kind of ambiguous there.
Yeah, yeah, so. Okay, well, good discussion and we'll, we'll, as you can see, it's not as easy as it appears.
Not at all. Can we, instead of inventing, reinventing the wheel?
Yes.
Can we see what Mount Blue did, what Sanford did, so that we have some idea instead of going down this path and reinventing the wheel maybe?
That's a good idea because they may have already gone through the bumps-
Right.
And you'll know what those bumps are and- I don't know how much they did do that consideration.
It would be interesting to know what they did.
Exactly.
And I, I think that we are very righteous. I think we're a very righteous school system that we follow, we dot our i's, we cross our t's, and we can't do it, I can't take Brian's money on a whim.
Right, exactly. Right?
Right, this is excused.
Good job.
Be in five minutes.
So keep thinking on this, we'll be back to talk more as we draft guidelines and look at other districts and what they may have done for guidelines.
There we go. Convene this meeting of the Auburn School Committee with a pledge of allegiance. Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And introductions, we'll start with you, Adam.
Adam Hanson, Business Manager.
Michelle McClellan, Assistant Superintendent.
Alfrieda Farnia, Mayor's Rep, Ward Four.
Pat Gaudier at Large.
Katie Grun, Superintendent.
Tom Kendall, Ward Three.
Bonnie Hayes, Ward Two.
Brian Bellknap, Ward Four.
Bob Neely, Ward One.
And Faith is excused, she's on a mission to a Caribbean, Caribbean island, I'm guessing going to say that. Won't identify exactly where it is.
Not as glamorous, so we don't want people to worry about her.
That's right, we don't want people to worry about her. So, uh- Any communications, has any member of the committee received a communication that they'd like to share? Being done, we'll move on to the consent agenda, we had a revised addendum, uh, that will be included in this consent agenda, including the administrative contract renewals. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, which involves this agenda, the approval of the minutes, and-
To move.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Very good. Pat, are you with us on that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Unanimous.
Um, I do want to say, uh, the hiring is going fairly well. Um, the administrators are doing really excellent jobs, staying on top of it, and I do want to say though, uh, the Walton Autism Program, we do not have applicants and we, so that is a concern. Um, Ryan Fairchild, uh, has the Plan B of the students will be placed in, um, where they would have been placed had we not had the program. So we're keeping our eyes and ears out, we've advertised, we put it on Facebook, we've put it on Twitter, we've put it in different places. Um, Walton has tried to get, but right now, we don't have any applications for that, um, position. Um, you know, we went, Michelle and I went to superintendents conference and all the superintendents were saying the same thing, pools are very low right now. Um, you either have a lot, like social studies, with 10 applications, or grade five teacher with three applications. So we tried to get the word out that our contract had settled so people could look at- at the salary increases in our contract. So, you know, only takes one great one, so it's not the number, it's the best. So I just wanted to give you a heads up, the Walton is a concern with no applications at this point.
Do we have four students?
We have the students identified, ready to go, but we don't have the staff. So we may, we may not do it, or we may keep it open, and maybe when we get somebody, we can start to transition, but it has been difficult.
I think keeping it open would be a good idea. They're probably in the process of applying all over the place. Have you advertised out of state?
Well, we do, School Spring is out of state. They get, oh yeah, we get applications. We also go in...
There's another one, what's the other place that you can...
Oh, um...
I forgot the name of it.
Serving schools.
Serving schools.
Yeah, yeah. What Ryan and I worked on the other day is, we were inviting people on School Spring to apply. So we can look at applicants that have the certifications we want, and so, we can get on, we got, we got a math teacher last year from me reaching out to people. So, we also are doing that. We're doing our best, and we're disappointed, we have two special ed teachers in need at Sherwood Heights. So, you know, there's certain positions that are harder to fill than others.
Right.
Can you get a list from the state of people certified in that?
No.
Area? That maybe you could contact people directly?
Right, well, I think people try to do that networking, and, you know, mentioning to people who know people who know people, and then working on School Spring. Yeah.
That's a good feature of School Spring, it allows us to look out, as well as candidates looking at us, we can look out and see who's in that pool as well, who's certified.
We, we, East Auburn has, just so people, what, listening, East Auburn has a grade four position that's open, Washburn has no openings, they have not had turnover this year. Walton is fully hired right now, yes. Sherwood Heights has a classroom teacher, two special ed teachers, and the classroom is fifth grade, she is interviewing next week. Auburn Middle School has a math science position and a social studies position. Edward Little has the, is interviewing the misuse counselor position, and has an anticipated social studies position that will be going up, and an ELL position, other than that, fully hired.
What about Fairview?
Fairview, no turnover, so they are not hiring. Park Avenue is all hired except for one ELL position, and they're interviewing next week, you approved an ELL position this week. And then, who have I missed? No one, right? R E T C is fully hired, Franklin is fully hired. So we're down to, and hope that we don't have movement, this will be a movement in the next couple of weeks, if there's going to be some movement, so. But, very, very good, a low turnover rate.
That's good, that was one of my questions I was gonna ask you, is it possible you can put that little listing of what's left to go, like, and send us an email?
Yes, absolutely.
School Committee, an email.
I'll do it next week, I'm out tomorrow, Friday.
Report back, yeah.
Yeah, I will. Yep.
Very good. Public participation, you hear as representatives of the public and therefore want, you know...
Take a number.
Take a number, right? Moving on to the, not gonna, business, I'm gonna call it, says here, student report, and we're not gonna, you do student report. We're gonna go on to business, which is the planning and development, which is going to deal with our handbook, and I imagine that's why these two gentlemen are here.
That is why they're here. So, Michelle Scott, Todd, and a group of stakeholder group has been working on the handbook, as you all know, we've been looking at the athletic co-curricular handbook, especially around the response when a student violates the contract. So it's really about contract violations, so Michelle Scott and Todd, come on up. So this is to let you know what is drafted so far, and what will go into effect in the fall. This is for athletes grades seven through 12. And co-curricular, not just athletes, co-curricular.
Very excited to be presenting tonight about this. So, we're here tonight, Todd and Scott are here tonight, to talk to you about a process that has been undertaken to look at a section of the co-curricular, extracurricular handbook that goes out. It's not policy anymore, it's more of an administrative, building level procedure, but it's a big topic that you all sometimes hear about. So we wanted to make sure you were informed about where we are in that process, what the results are, and then the process itself, how this came about and came to be. So, we're gonna just jump in. And I want to just, first of all, Todd's expertise and Scott's ability to facilitate this process has been just outstanding, and I think the product is, is good. So, Scott, you're gonna tell us about the, the process itself, and like, what led, where did we start, how did we come to?
Yeah, there are, there wasn't one thing, it was many factors, from, it goes even farther back to last year, as we examined the eligibility process from an academic standpoint, and we saw that there were some issues there needed to be revised, and not just from passing, but we really needed to make sure that the language aligned with what we were talking about in our philosophy, which led us to making the changes of, instead of talking about passing five classes, we talked about passing six, and that four of them were in the four core areas, because if we're really gonna say that our, we're all, our priority is about the academic growth of students, we needed to make sure that that document reflected that. So, even back then, we realized, we have some things that we need to examine, and so that was pretty heady stuff. We had a very healthy, Todd led that group last summer, had a very good product, and it, we were able to implement it throughout the school year, and it was very successful. Through that, that's when we started putting our, the three of us started to put our heads together, that the next area that we need to start talking about is the substance one, the substance component of the student handbook for the athletes. And, there was lots of language that we felt like, we understood it, but was it clear to the student, was it clear, clear to the family, for them to understand how the process worked, if there was a violation, and what they were agreeing to? So we really, and then, through, like I said, it was never one thing, so we understood it, but we were getting feedback that it wasn't clear. Another element we've talked about is the idea of how vaping has had an impact within our school system, particularly at the high school, and so, from my place, from a historical, we were just talking about it again today, it was very, very rare situations, where we had multiple offenses by a student. That led to an appeal process, and that was really in place for that student who had that second violation, and how that language was crafted, and the document itself was, you know, we had a situation, we revised and did it on the spot. This gave us an opportunity to clear it all up, and as we were seeing, as the school year was progressing, we were seeing more instances of two violations within the four years of a high school student, and so, really started to give us some pause, not just of how we were implementing it, but really about what our approach is for students, and what's the best interest of them, and does that align with how we approach educating students whenever there's, if they've struggled with a test, or if they struggle with a substance, are we making sure that we're aligning our responses to that? And so that when we struggle with a test, we support them, when we struggle with a substance, are we supporting them? And so this gave us a good opportunity to pause and say, how are we going about delivering that support for a student, and is that aligning to how we conduct our business day to day? And that also allowed us to say, do these components, whether we're talking about consequences or we're talking about support, still make sense? What we know about education is that there's a pendulum swing, and at one point in time, it made perfect sense, and as time progresses, sometimes that pendulum has to swing, and so we need to be responsive to that. And so through the course of the school year, we started to see, is this making sense? Because sometimes part of the change of behavior tool is having a consequence, and is that having, is that consequence having the change that we're looking for? Just the same as, if you haven't passed a test, just telling a student, you gotta do better the next time, is that enough? Same for us, if a student has a substance issue, just tell them, don't do it again, is that enough? Is the consequence enough? And so, we had to really examine, are the consequences in line with our philosophy of educating, and are we doing enough to do that? We had some components that happened throughout the year that continued to give us that pause, which brought us to March, when we brought together a group of stakeholders, which was, Faith joined us from the school committee, we had a parent from the community, we had Mary Karen from Healthy Andrews Coggin, Bill Buzza represented some of the co-curriculars, and I'm gonna talk about that in a second, as well as we had admin and coaches participate from the extracurricular side. And so our mindset was, let's start looking at if our eligibility for academics affects both extracurricular and co-curricular, we also need to examine the fact that our substance component should, should be in place for both sets of students. And, Todd, can you explain the difference between an extracurricular and a co-curricular?
Yeah, so, back in the day, in the athletic world, it was strictly, you know, the athletic director took care of all of the team sports. And, over the last 10 or 12 years, there's really been a movement to bring in and bring the level of kind of respect and notoriety of those extracurricular, the drama, the marching band, those kids, and I think I'm preaching to the choir, those kids work just as hard as your varsity football. You know, if you, you see a drama performance, you know the hours that those kiddos put in to getting that play ready. So, I think, you know, we've had a little bit of transition in the athletic department, and I think my background at some of the other school districts I worked, I've always been involved with the extracurricular, with the marching band, with the math team, anybody that, as Scott said, kind of competes outside of the building. So we, we really kind of dipped our toe in the water, last year with the academic eligibility, and the kids felt, felt like they were part of it. You know, we had a couple situations with one group that had some, some academic struggles, and the advisor appreciated being part of that, as well as, as the students, so, they're all our kids, right? So, I think, you know, as we look at treating kids fair and equal, that was why we put them into this policy as well.
The idea was to try to develop some uniformity, so that, like Todd said, that people were feeling that they were being treated equally, they were being recognized equally by the MPA, and so with this document, that was some of the mindset, that the extracurriculars and the co-curriculars were under one umbrella. If they were gonna be under one umbrella for academic eligibility, then they should have the same outcomes and expectations for the substance component of it. And so, that really brought a huge level of discussion, because in our previous document, we had talked about percentages, if there was a violation, you missed a certain percentage, and so, we really had to work hard, trying to come up with language and a process, so that, when you, it's easy to be able to identify 25% of a basketball season, or a soccer season, or something like that, how do you identify 25% of a drama season? And what accounts for a drama season, or a marching band season? So it really spurred some incredibly healthy conversation. And we'll get to that, but, the mindset was, we need to be creating a document that's responsive, is in line to our educational philosophy, and really make sure that both extracurricular and co-curricular were following under one umbrella.
So as Scott was saying, there was, in this discussion, over the course of, we started in March?
March.
On this conversation, many, to try to represent it here in this forum is difficult, because what started as seemingly, oh yeah, we wanna bring co-curricular and extracurricular together, that'll be easy, it wasn't. We had many discussions about where it was the same, and where it didn't quite fit in the same box. But what evolved was this commitment, over time, to supporting student development. So it wasn't, to use an old term, looking at athletics first and then academics, it was looking at what's the health and well-being issues for a student, as they, in the terms of the violation, I'm thinking through the lens of the violation now. In terms of violation, what is the first priority? The first priority is health and well-being of that particular student. If they're misusing a substance, what are their needs? And then looking at, what are the academic needs? And then what are your character needs, so that you are better able to develop in whatever sport or activity? And that was a lovely culmination that came out of this, and we're gonna pass this out, you wanna pass this up through? A copy of the draft that we have, that we actually just kind of finished up today.
Thank you.
But it was, I'm glad we didn't.
Great.
It was, it was a good process, because I think we got to a better place by not rushing through.
So this is not policy, so we don't have to approve it, you're just informing us.
Correct. Yep. Correct.
And that was our mindset, was it's not policy, it is procedure, it does become part of our, our steps and processes for the high school, as well as for the middle school, and to make you aware, so that when questions do come, you can, one, be able to testify to the process that went through, and try to, to your best of your ability, be inside of our brains, as to what led us through this, and give us some direction in the decision-making process.
So this is one section, to be clear, one section of the extracurricular, co-curricular handbook, that all participants, student participants and families receive upon their, when would they get that?
When they indicate, students get this, get the contract, is what they all call it, get the contract when they say they're gonna play a sport.
Okay.
Or they're gonna do a, they're gonna be part of marching band. Once they declare that, and they say, I'm gonna be coming, and they have that, for some, it's a preseason meeting, for some, it's the kiddo that starts when school starts and says, I wanna join marching band, or when they're preparing to start drama.
It's, it's made available on the website for, for parents to, to download and to sign. And, many of our fall coaches, and Bill Buzza with our marching band, have already met with their kids going into, before they went out for summer break, so a lot of the forward-thinking coaches have already put this in the hands of, of their kiddos.
Have you heard anything back from them, from families?
They haven't used this current draft.
They have the, the old, and basically, Bonnie, it's, it's the, the signing off that they're going to follow the rules, they're gonna take care of the uniforms, and then be given a hard copy of this, which obviously, will be done once we go ahead with it.
So you can see that opening statement is indicative of the shift that we were just talking about. It's really identifying that the building of character and intellect is the, is the concern and the, the mission, and we feel strongly about that, and that subsequently, there's a prioritization on academic growth and personal well-being. And, going on further, saying that, recognizing that consequences are important to a learning process, it's really the focus to include the education and support of students and families who are found to be in violation of the contract. So that's the new piece. Yes, consequences are important to the learning process, we, there's no denying of that, however, it doesn't end there, and I think that came about from looking at the number of second violations, and looking at the data and saying, we've really increased the, the number of second violations that we're seeing in students.
Yeah, it was, it was definitely a shift, like, you know, it was important for us to, to articulate what, what we're about, rather than, the previous one had some real nice flowery conversation in there, but it, it really wasn't saying, what are we about when it comes to supporting students? And whether they are part of this, they, they ever sign this or not, but when they walk through our building, what are we, what are we saying we're gonna be about? We're gonna be about educating you, we're gonna be about developing you, we're gonna be talking about how you become, develop those character qualities that we're looking for, and that you have grown as a human being, and that we're after, you know, we're looking after your well-being. And so that, that was real important. As we compared documents from around high schools, around this area and around the state, it really drove home. Now, some of them did a nice job with that, some of them didn't touch that, but we, you know, examined some of those components, but really, as we went through the process with the stakeholders, and with the groups, and the many meetings, of like, what are we about? Whether this kid signs this or not, we gotta talk about... Whether this kid signs this or not, we got to talk about, we're developing character, we're developing good human beings, and we're talking about their academic growth. And so, it was real important that we put that front and center and not have it be some flowery thing. But, but really, what do, how do we do business every day?
I think some of that came out with the discussion, just using it as an example. Are we going to look at days that they're restricted or percentage of the season they're restricted? And no one had real heart in that. Everyone had opinion, but no real heart. And that shifted when we started to say, we need to go after what the issue is. What's the issue? If this student has violated once or twice, or first, if it's the first violation, is there an issue? We need to determine that first so we don't have a second violation. So, let's, let's, let's look at that. And so, we're going to go through, you'll, I hope you see that reflected in, in, um, the document. So, the very first thing that they're, that you see in this document is talking about self-referral.
Oh, I have a question before you move forward. The second paragraph, um, the very last phrase in the last sentence saying, um, no matter where or when the violation occurs. Can you talk a little bit about that? Does that mean at home, on the weekend, vacation?
It is, when they are under this contract and there's language that defines when you're under this contract, yes, that, that, that means just that. If we have a report that a student has violated by using a substance, it doesn't matter if it's in Auburn, doesn't matter if it's in Lewiston, doesn't matter if it's in Bangor or Massachusetts. We have to investigate that because there's also language that talk, that we were, um, we were upfront about, uh, in that very same second paragraph. Let's be honest, you, you are held to a higher standard.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we wanted to be explicit about that because that's feedback that we get from kids. They're saying, hey, we're, we feel like we're held to a higher standard. You are. And so, you, we talked about that. When you are out representing because you're performing outside of the building, whether it be drama or it be marching band or it's the basketball team or the field hockey team, you are outside of our building. You are now representing Edward Little High School, you're representing Auburn, you're representing your community. And so, therefore, it gets, going to get tied back to you. So, if you're at a water park in Massachusetts while you're under this contract, you're under this contract. Uh, and so, that's why we had to make sure later on that we defined the, uh, what the terminology meant about being under this contract in a season. But yes, it does apply to that.
I like that. I, I like that. And, and the students know. They know. There's who isn't, you know, and, and that's been, when, when we look at a lot of the news, that's what we see is the missing link over there. It's, it's, it's a matter of the parties that are being held at people's homes and they're using there or they're drinking. And then, then they come back to play. But the others know that they were breaking, uh, you know, their own contract. So, I think holding, uh, kids to high standards is, is excellent. They can do it. And we won't get the best from them if we don't, uh, have those high standards.
Um, and, you know, the truth is, the majority of kids adhere to the contract.
Yep, they do.
And so, that, that's important to remember. We're not talking about that the majority are violating. Um, and so, we are doing a good job at developing good decision-making.
So, if the kid, if, if somebody says, oh, I was at Scott and Nease House this weekend and I saw ten marijuana plants growing, is that manufacturing?
So, one of the things that the, the group, uh, because one of our parent, uh, committee members did a great job of bringing in, I think, uh, we had nine different school district policies. And, um, I think two of those had what they call a knowingly present, uh, clause, which I don't necessarily know if they had the ten marijuana plants growing that'd be knowingly present.
Right.
But many districts do. If, um, the three of us went to an underage gathering and didn't leave immediately, we could be held under this contract, whether we consumed, possessed. Um, but if we walked in and if there were ten marijuana plants growing, I mean, I think it'd be a further conversation of who, who was.
Who's the owner for those?
Yeah. Was that, was that legal for them to be growing that and?
Yeah, there's, yeah. I think that's not as easy a question as it used to be.
Right, right. It, it, with the new laws, you're right, Tom. All right, so, but, and I guess my, my, my thought process is it, you don't say growing, you say manufacturing. So, that's, i.e., the same thing.
If you have a prescription, it's legal to grow.
Right.
So, just a point, and Mr. Nease mentioned a couple of times of our, our second violations. Uh, I, I just want to, for folks to know, ninety-five percent of those are, um, the electronic cigarette, the vape, the Juul. And we're working really hard with Healthy Andrews Scoggan and, uh, they're seeing it across the region that our high school kids are, are.
It's not exclusive to Auburn, Maine.
So, it, it isn't, um, in the past, you know, when we've had these second violations, it's been strictly alcohol or marijuana. Uh, really, we're, we're just trying to tackle this, this Juuling vape epidemic that we have with our kiddos right now.
I just ask for clarification. Uh, I know there are some co-curricular activities like band or chorus that are also classes. Is that correct? Are they treated the same way? I mean, you can't tell them they can't go to class for fifteen days, so.
No, no, this would be the outside of the classroom component. We wouldn't keep them out of class.
Okay, so, it's just a competition if they left the building and did something like that?
We did talk about that, Pat, that, or it did come up before a minute. Um, if it's a requirement of the class to go to the band concert.
Right.
Right, that would be a different thing, right?
Right. Well, and I did, I did notice, is it a change that they must go to practice? Has that always been that if you're violating, you must be in practice? You can't skip practice?
Yeah.
Yes.
And that was one of those subtle little changes. And I, I, I kind of come back to Ms. Fordnier, who had asked earlier, when we had talked about it, it said may. Like, it was left up to the students to decide here or there. We said, no, you, you're going, the expectation. So, let's clear up that language and it's a subtle little thing from may to must. You are going to go because really, when we'd look at the mindset, we're looking after your well-being. We want you involved. We don't want you separated, but there is a level of consequence. So, you are going to continue to have that level of participation, not on the performance. And performance being, you're on stage, you're, you're doing the performance for the band or you're on the field, uh, for the contest.
And that also comes from the, the MPA, um, Sports Medicine Committee. You don't want a kiddo to miss fifteen days of practice and then on day sixteen, come back and, and try to go run that, that five K. You know, they're, can they continue in practice? And as soon as that consequence's over, they can return, return to action.
So, a little subtle piece that I, I think doing this process was really good. Um, we put, moved the self-referral for student assistance at the forefront. Um, because again, we want kids accessing help and not waiting for a violation for there to be help. And what we learned is that students and families were not aware of the self-referral process. And what that would entail is a student saying, I have a problem, before there's a violation that occurs. And yes, that puts a great level of self-awareness on the kiddo. But we also wanted to put it at the forefront for the kiddo, uh, to be able to say, I have a problem, whether it's with, uh, a vape or it's with alcohol or a marijuana or a more serious drug. Um, we, we really pushed that because before it was in there. There's, there's not a whole lot of new language that came out of that. We did some, there are some components that are, that are tweaked up a little bit. Um, but it really allowed them to be able to know right at the beginning of this document that we're looking for you to, to reach out for help and we want to be there to offer that help. Again, going back to that well-being of the student. Um, and that, some of the components that we changed to that were, it was a trusted adult, an administrator, counselor, teacher, or a coach, to be able to come forth, for them to be able to say, I need help. And the other little subtle difference was that a friend, a teammate, uh, another member of their group could make that referral and could speak up and say, my friend needs help. Uh, and so, that allowed that to kick off. And so, there, like I said, there really wasn't a huge change there. But it, we moved it to the forefront to really bring it, um, up in front and center for people to know that that was there. And that was what was really great through this process is that we had some of the stakeholders say, we didn't know anything about that. And not from a, um, a loophole, just from, if we're really talking about the well-being, then let's put it right out there.
So, another area that there was some need for clarification or, or making things much more explicit was around, um, when, when am I under contract? So, Todd, you want to talk a little bit about?
Sure. Uh, the, the, the fall or the beginning of school is, is that, uh, one time where most of the, the seasons, we will start it right at the first day of the MPA season for the winter and the spring. The fall, uh, we'll start August nineteenth, but we'll have many of our kiddos sign that the week before so that they don't forget to give it to their coach, though it's ready to go. So, this, this, the date that they sign that, they are under contract. Uh, we start August nineteenth. Every student athlete, every marching band, every extracurricular will be under contract. And that goes through the end of their season. And because the end of the season can be very, uh, vague and influx, was it the playoff game? Was it the conference championship? Was it this, uh, round robin tournament we went to the end of the year? We, um, we use the language from our old procedure that the end-of-year celebration, which for many groups is their banquet. So, many times, the season ends November first, they'll get together for their soccer banquet the next week. So, it goes through that banquet. And, you know, experience shows, I think what that does, it, it just holds the kids accountable that much longer so that there isn't, uh, an embarrassing situation in between the end of the season and, um, you know, said student getting a, an award that, that evening.
And the other way that that has transpired and why that language has been there is, is the kiddos that get those postseason, uh, all-star selections. Like, the regular season may be over for the, you know, all of the championships are done and the banquet hasn't been held. Um, we don't want to see a kiddo who has had a violation leading into that because not only, they, they're going to be representing the entire conference and, and that kind of realm. And so, that, that has worked well for us in the past. And so, we kept that. And so, we really tried to define, once you sign it, you're under contract. So, even if the season starts on Monday and we have a parent meeting today, once I sign it, I'm under contract. So, we take away that myth of, well, my season doesn't start until Monday, so I can make poor choices this weekend. You signed it, it begins now, and this is when your season starts. And it concludes, once the season's over, by definition of the award ceremony.
So, what's the consequence or the process if a student doesn't sign the contract?
They can't participate. So, the way this works, if you could, we've had some, some changes over time because, uh, when they used to do this, you had this, this contract and then you had this really swell, tiny little emergency card form where you had to fill in every injury, every allergy, who your doctor was, your insurance on teeny tiny. So, instead, we, uh, changed it to a much larger form, uh, to put in all the medical information and that you've had your physical and your clearance. And also on there is where you are signing off to say that you have, um, that you're agreeing to this and that it's your permission, that your parent is aware that you're participating in the sport. So, the, to come back to that, you, you're not participating because that signature indicates that that information on the medical side is there and accurate and that your parent is agreeing that you're participating in the sport.
Mrs. Hayes?
So, first of all, this is seven to twelve.
Mm-hmm.
I know what MPA is, but if I'm a new seventh-grade parent and my child is just starting to participate in school sports, I may not know what MPA is. So, we really should spell it out.
Yeah, so, the, the MPA is the Main Principles Association.
Absolutely.
Which, um, governs nine through twelve and gives recommendations for middle school participation. They have a, they have a very nice middle school guidelines, recommendations. Um, but middle schools are so different around our state. We're seven, eight, many are six, seven, eight, some are five, six, seven, some are K to eight. So, what we do or what we have done this past year is, uh, on sixth grade step-up day, uh, there was time dedicated to, what do you want to do if you want to play, uh, fall athletics? And we're, um, we do not start any of our fall activities at Auburn Middle School before the start of school. So, we'll have those three days to get them signed up and get all their paperwork, um, going.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you. And then, the other part of it is, the lobster bowl is coming up. Yet their kids are going to wear the Edward Little jerseys. So, are they under this contract or not?
They are not. The, the, the students participating in the lobster bowl are graduated seniors.
Okay.
Uh, class of two thousand nineteen.
And that brings us to another level of the discussion, which is, there are some groups or organizations, which would be the shrine, where the students already have to adhere to some, some guidelines and regulations. And so, a student, whether they're a, a player or cheerleader, a, a participant, no matter what, are going to need to adhere to their guidelines in order to participate.
So, I'm ski meister. Okay, and I'm going off to the next level from the high school or whatever level.
At least from high school.
All right, so, are they under contract still? Or do they do the same thing as the shriners?
Well, if they are doing, if they are doing this through, um, if it's a, an MPA-sponsored piece, then they would be under contract. If they're doing this outside in their own private ski organization. Huh?
The key is MPA-sponsored.
And, and if their banquet has, if their end-of-season celebration had happened at that point or not.
Then they're done. Okay, that's what we.
They would still be under contract.
Okay.
And our ski team was so successful this year that their banquet ended up happening into the spring season.
Right, right.
Right, exactly. They had those high expectations that Alfreda was talking about for a little longer.
Right, right. Okay, thank you.
Uh, just from a side note to come back to Bonnie's question of, if you're a seventh grader and you don't know anything about it. When you watch, um, a parent night for a seventh and eighth grade meeting versus, uh, someone who's a junior or a senior, they're very, very different because they're, the coaches, I've observed it, have done a, a really nice job going through. And the athletic director at the middle school has done a really nice job going through and spelling this out to seventh and eighth graders because it is new territory for them. And so, typically, what happens when you go through this for a parent night, uh, when you're looking at juniors and seniors, they're pretty familiar. This year, it's going to be a little more in-depth if we, as we move forward with this because there are some, some changes. But in years past, they're looking at the, this tiny little tweaks. Like, last year, it was just the, the tweaks in terms of academic eligibility. So, I just wanted to come back, like, I have observed, um, having had a, a student that went through, like, they do a really nice job going through with the seventh and eighth graders what this all means.
So, one thing that stayed the same, but we thought it was important for you to know about, was, uh, how these tiered consequences apply across the student's career. And, um, Bonnie, you said, you brought up that this is seven through twelve.
Right.
So, the consequences apply for seventh and eighth grade. And then, they reset upon entry into ninth grade. Okay, so, you have those tiered consequences for seventh and eighth grade. You go to ninth grade, you get a reset, and, um, then they will apply cumutively throughout the high school career of ninth grade.
And that, that's similar to our academic eligibility as well. And the mindset we, we've had is, we want all of our freshmen walking through that door on August nineteenth with a fresh start. Uh, academically, substance abuse, we want them to, to get involved and have that fresh start.
I think we need to remember that this is extracurricular. So, the band prac, the band banquet may not be held until wherever. So, we need to be sure that, we understand that the banquets may be the end of the season for the sports. But what is truly the end of the season for the extracurricular?
And Bill Buzza was kind of our extracurricular guru on, on the stakeholder group with us. And, um, band was an interesting one. But even, um, a little deeper is the drama group that gets into the fall musical and the one-acts. And then, they get into the children's play and the senior play. So, we're really going to work hard with Bill to define what those dates are and when, when do those seasons end? And what's that end-of-season? Is it the cast party? Is it the tear set, the set tear down, those kind of things?
And student council and all the other things that are extracurricular.
He did make that change in the, um, language of saying the end-of-season celebration or banquet. So, trying to recognize that.
So, you say co-curricular, I heard an emphasis on the performing arts. You're talking about speech, debate, math clubs, uh, class president, everything, the two girls. two girls that sat here? Or are you just talking about competitive?
We would, we haven't gone that far yet. Yet, is what I would say. And we had the conversation about class advisor. We had the conversation about our student leadership team. We had the conversation about NHS. Those each have their own, they all have similar guidelines that already govern them that if there is a violation, these are the steps and procedures that go with them. We haven't gone as far as to talk about speech and debate. We haven't, we're exploring the math club. What is that going to look like? When we talked about those ones that stay, say, we had an art club that was just an after school program, the book club, um, we weren't going to, to do that because there was this delicate balance of we want to increase participation and we don't want this to be a deterrent. We want this to be a guiding document and not, and that's why we talked a lot about the health and wellbeing of a student. So some of those already have some stipulations if there are some character violations or substance violations within them. We haven't got ourselves to that place yet, but we, we did very much talk about student advise, you know, student executive board, what would that look like? Well, there's already, and we need to beef that up because what I learned this year is that it's inconsistent from year to year to year. You know, the class advisors in ninth grade may real, they, they all have it, um, may really stick hard to it, and this one is a little looser, and this one's a little looser, and then this one is really tight again. And so I, I did, I met with all the class advisors to say, we got to be on the same page, uh, to develop some consistency and some expectation. So that kiddo, I don't have the conversation of, well, my, my previous daughter was, you know, didn't attend this many events and they could, you know, so we are working with them very hard. And so that already has some governing guidelines.
There is research out there that supports the more a student is involved in an out of, outside of the classroom activity, that the more successful that they are likely to be in school. And so we, we embrace that. Uh, and so when you get into those co-curriculars and how far out you go with this, say an art club, uh, that meets periodically, we want a student to be, who may not be engaged in other ways after school. If they're interested in the art club, we want them to be interested in that art club, right? So there's this tricky balance. We don't want to say we want to lower the expectation, but we also don't want to overly restrict so that some students aren't participating.
For many of those, they're, they're not as routine. They're not as regular. And so we didn't want there to be any type of barrier of saying, sorry, you can't be part of our club today because you don't have this sign. We want them doing something.
Well, there is school policy.
Oh, absolutely.
Remember, this isn't everything.
That is totally true.
There are students that aren't involved in things and so forth that have, right.
There's still consequences.
So if something happens and you're in the math club, we would discuss, is the math club appropriate? How will you be participating in the math club? You know, sort of, so this doesn't restrict that there are plans put together. You know, there are school policies that even the students in the handbook have to sometimes meet with the superintendent, even though they're under contract.
But are involved in nothing after school for sure.
Exactly, yeah. Yeah, right.
So first violation, right out of the gate, here's, if there's a self-reporting or admission, the student will be restricted for participation for 15, if there's no self-reporting. No self-reporting, the referral hasn't happened, and the student admits, um, has not admitted, they're restricted for 15 days. During the 15 days, the student must participate in practices or rehearsals but cannot play or perform. For extracurricular activities that have a practice game, rehearsal, or performance over the weekend, those gate, those days will count toward as school days. Because oftentimes, we have, um, our, our drama folks may be practicing on Saturday, the basketball team may be practicing on Saturday. So that's why we had to clear up some of that language about talking about school days only.
So should that first, first sentence have school days, 15 school days? Or you're going to say calendar days?
It's in number three, I think.
I wanted to do it right then.
If, if you go down to the third dot.
See that, it says.
Will count as school days.
Yeah, it says it will count as school days. But what does the 15 days up top?
Right.
So we can make that consistent, participation for, for the 15 school days.
I have another possibly need for clarification. If there's no self-reporting or admission, but the investigation determines the student is.
That there was a violation.
Yeah, I think that should, because that makes it sound like.
It is. It's in, uh, that's just on the paragraph, on here if you look.
Yeah, I did read that.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm just saying, once the administration turns out a violation, the contract has occurred during the sport, just consequence, so forth. Okay, okay.
Once it's been determined that there's a violation.
So the paragraph above.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So, so why do you, okay, I guess it's just, why do you have to say if there's no self-reporting or admission? The student will.
We're going to get to that in a minute.
Okay.
The, the paragraph that follows the first violation, which was another, so we can finish this piece and that, that really highlights some of our shift. If a student violates a contract after being selected team captain or other leadership position, it'll be removed from that position for the remainder of the season. The student will be referred to the school counselor. The student will be referred to a substance misuse counselor. And thank you for supporting that in the budget. We are getting ready to start our interviews. We have some outstanding candidates there. But that really highlighted, um, if we're really talking about the wellbeing of a student, we didn't want it to just be a suggestion. This is going to be part of the process because we're really trying to head off there ever being a second violation. And so we really, you're going to meet with the school counselor, uh, their guidance counselor. And then there's also the component of working with the substance misuse counselor for meeting for there to be, um, a determination of, do they need to do an evaluation of a, a deeper issue with a substance? Is it a meet? Is it, you know, it kicks off that part. And if we're really going to talk about the wellbeing of a student, then let's put it right out there. A reduction of, or restriction, a reduction of restriction plan.
Set it up, sorry.
You did. I wasn't ready for that. If a student admits to the violation and wishes to reduce the period of restriction, and this is the first violation, so we'd be talking about a restriction of the 15 days, the student may propose a plan to restore, atone, or repair the harm done by their actions to their self or others. The plan must be approved by the administration. So this is one of those areas where we wanted to be able to really talk about the character of a student. So Todd and I both may be in violation. And if Todd is saying, I didn't do it, and we still determine that there's a violation, and he says, nope, I didn't, I didn't, I didn't, he goes through that 15 days, but I come forth and say, yes, I did have a violation. We want to support that. We want to foster that. That's really good character. And we've run into those situations. And so it, it, rather than just congratulating a student on saying, you have great character and admitted to it, we really wanted to have a tool to be able to support them and lead them to showing good character. And so this, that, this was an interesting one that we discovered through some research, um, through the state, uh, from a very restorative mindset of saying, if a student is willing to admit and go put themselves on a plan, then there should be some reduction there. And so that allows for this to happen. The student generates the plan that must be approved.
Can you just again, repeat the part that you said, this is for the 15 day?
This is for the first violation.
So can somehow that be delineated because?
It's, within the document, we have the first violation, and we have it outlined A, B, C, D, E, F, and then there's the paragraph right below it that talks about.
Maybe we could put a, um, a header there that.
Yes, something so that they will know. That's not for every single time, it's for only the first violation.
Well, you're going to get to that in a minute.
Okay.
Is it just for the first violation?
It's not.
It's not.
Repeats for the second violation.
Okay.
Because, so the second violation, um, is at the bottom of that page, and it's very similar language. Instead of talking about a 15 day restriction, we're talking about a 30 day restriction. And again, we're still talking about the wellbeing of a student. So even after we go through the first violation, um, and nothing has changed, like they, maybe they do a reinstatement plan, maybe they don't do a reinstatement plan. If there's a second violation, we still need to indicate that there, there's an unspoken cry for help here that's going on. And we can't just say, well, you violated twice, the natural consequences are good enough for you. We still want to intercede and be able to, maybe now the plan, a reinstatement plan, because there's an admission and that they're saying that, that they are going to go on a plan, that plan has a bit more depth to it and has some more guidelines and is a little deeper and a little stronger about the support that we are going to work with the student. The student's going to step up more, and we're going to try to intervene more heavily. That could look like more community service, that could look like more work with the substance misuse counselor, that could work, be more family involvement. But again, we're not just going to say, it's your second violation, well, too bad you didn't learn the first time around. We still want to go through and, the plan is really essential to us. And that was, again, through our work of doing this process to really say, if we're going to talk about the wellbeing of a student, we can't just do it one time, we got to do it multiple times.
It was probably the most exciting part of this process, as long as it was, to kind of have the realization of, we really want to go after the wellbeing piece. We want to say, your health and wellbeing is paramount. Your academics follow that, and your character follows that. If you need to be focusing on something else right now, that's why you're having a restriction. That's why you're having the 15 days or the 30 days is because this is not just a punishment for the sake of punishment. This is because you need some focus someplace else right now. So I think that is, it, it was a great and exciting moment to say, that's aligns with our vision first. If you go back to Vision 2030, it aligns with what our beliefs are about our mission in our schools. Uh, and so I think it's going to communicate well. It's not going to avoid the hard conversations that these two in particular, and Katie is involved in sometimes. But it, it's definitely much more aligned with our beliefs and our values.
I think the extra time is excellent. I, I like that, the addition of extra time if needed, because at that point, you're at the second violation and it could be complicated, and it could take a little more time. So that's good that you put that there.
But one of, one of the kind of conversations that generated early on, um, was, there was some feeling that in our, in our previous procedure, our first violation was 25% of the season. And if the student, unfortunately, we had that second violation, uh, the consequence jumped astronomically where students were missing two complete seasons, the season they were in and then two complete seasons. Uh, and once again, if we're in the education business, uh, it, we were just, we were, we were the hammer. We weren't educating. So I think this was really a nice fit, um, and getting those stakeholders together, I, I think we were reflective of, uh, something needed to change.
That's great, great.
A more balanced response.
Yes, definitely.
The reduction plan is very similar on the second violation. The only change, uh, from the first violation to the second violation was from 15 days to 30 days, and the reduction plan is, is similar.
It's the same thing. It would still come before.
Consistency, that's good.
And, and the language in the, in the reduction plan talks more about the timeline and, um, and it has, it has stronger language about being restorative. And I, I really appreciated the first sentence, a, a plan to restore, atone, or repair the harm done by their actions to self or others. And so it really, it's not just, what have I done to myself, but now I need to atone for that through this process. It's not a, a public flogging, but it, it's really part of the process of restorative to their teammates or their colleagues in drama. Um, and, and what does that look like? And so that's, it, then it goes on to outline that because that was, that was a big piece that, you know, I really appreciated the stakeholder group. Bill Buzza spoke very, very well about having seen that process play out and how a student needs to atone for that to, to their colleagues and what a big statement that was and what a big impact that was.
You can imagine if Cinderella violates.
Say something to her.
Okay, I got you. It violates, you know, that's a big, that's a big, um, impact on the rest of that.
Fall musical.
The, the crew, right? So, yes, Brian?
Are they signing this per calendar year or per sport? It, you know, like do I, if I'm, and the reason why I'm asking is if I have, say, I'm playing soccer, and I have my first violation, and I miss my first 15 days, and I'm really good until two days before the season is done, and then I have my second violation, do I miss those two days plus, uh, you know, I'm a basketball player, so do I miss? It, it's, it's for the full calendar year, right? Regardless of how many sports I'm playing.
And it will carry, that, that situation would carry over into the next season.
So if I'm just a soccer player, I miss 15 days of, you know, last 15 days of the first season and the first 15 days of the second season.
Correct.
What, I suppose, probably answered my own question, but just for clarification, I'm a drama student and a soccer player. And I'm going to be out the 15 days for both activities or three activities, whatever I'm.
If they're overlapping.
Yeah.
Yeah, if they're overlapping.
Yep.
Hey, this is wordsmithing, and I know I probably shouldn't be doing, but I think it's.
We, we've looked at this a thousand times.
If a student, I think where I have, if a student admits, I would.
In the middle.
Whenever you say student admits or, if a student takes ownership for the violation, I think I like takes ownership, then you just need me to confess. You know, that, that's what I, I think I had the problem initially was, yeah.
And, and we, we kind of.
You know, if there's a, so, no self-reporting or admission, you know, no ownership on the violation, that's what you're.
And I, I think that's a really good, we've bantered around, like, well, what if they don't admit and they go on the plan? Well, by doing the plan, they're, now we're taking ownership for it. So I, that's a very, we, we scrapped that back and forth, like, really, that's part of the atonement is, is to take ownership, whether you confess or not confess. If you're willing to do the plan, we want to support that. And, and because that was some of the language that we had heard previously through the year, Mike, the student admitted to it, and so that's where I think we jump to admit.
Yeah.
So do you, do you think a seventh grader will understand writing a plan?
Oh, yeah.
They're smarter than you think.
Oh, absolutely. Now, does, does that mean we stand with hands behind our backs? Absolutely not. We support students where they need to be supported. The onus is on the student. It doesn't say necessarily they have to write the plan or devise the plan by themselves, but the onus is on the student in this plan.
So they're sitting in a meeting and they're, they're working with a student, what do you think you should be doing? And so the seventh grader could say, well, I, I need to, um, stay after school for two nights with whatever. Okay, do you think you can agree to that? Yes. So it's kind of that. We're talking through what you think you could do.
Some will come with a plan in mind.
Right, and some.
And some will need support.
I just want to be sure that it's brought down to the level.
Yes.
And not just the high school level.
Right.
I want to be sure that we, that the seventh grade especially, understand what this is all about, because they're coming out of an elementary school and they're like, ah.
Well, and that, that's very much the mindset, because if we're talking about the wellbeing, we really need to demonstrate to them how important it is not to be involved in, in substances.
And somebody needs to help them because suddenly they're in a, in a school that's not East Auburn.
Bonnie, they, they are, there are plans developed with kindergarteners, first graders, second graders, third graders.
I'm just saying that this is, this is a big deal.
Oh, it's developed, but you, what I hear you saying is it needs to be developmental, meet them where they are.
The plan that you have in seventh grade would definitely look very different than the plan you had in 11th grade. Absolutely.
And even the development of that plan is totally different.
And you and I are both 11th graders, and that plan could be very different.
God, did you stay back?
Furpa, Bonnie, furpa. We can't go there.
The third and subsequent violation, um, regardless of circum, students found in violation of the third subsequent will be suspended from athletic and co-curricular participation for the remainder season or semester up to one calendar year. Third and subsequent violations will also result in a loss of eligibility for captaincy leadership positions for one calendar year. Reinstatement in athletics and co-curricular activities may occur only after completion of an approved plan. So again, we're still saying, we want to work on a plan with you. Now, the consequences do jump ratchet themselves up more, more dramatically, uh, and we tried to make sure that the language was, was clear if we're talking about a semester, a year. It could be up to a calendar, that's for the distribution. But we really want to, again, talk about, what are we going to do? And again, the plan for a first violation. And again, the plan for a first violation and a third violation are going to look different. They're going to be more intensive. Because again, it's demonstrate, it's going to be more intensive, because you're, the need is greater. And so really, the focus needs to be on the well-being of the student and not, and their academics, and not on that participation at that point in time. And that's why it ratchets itself up.
Taken by itself, and not necessarily in the context of the whole document, an approved plan. It doesn't say, "Plan of what?" In the context of the whole document, it's reasonably clear, but you make that statement, you know, "Plan to restore, atone, or repair the harm done." Does that need to be repeated there for, just for clarification?
So right now, if you look in the document, it says, "Approved plan created by the administrator." So now you're having a plan, you're going to probably have the student in there and be involved, but you're having a little more directed plan in your, in your final, at that final level.
He's just saying, do you want to repeat?
Yeah, I'm just thinking.
In order to, in order to, or whatever. That's, he's just asking.
Yeah, take a look at that.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that the co-curricular, I mean, the referral to the substance misuse counselor at each step will be, part of that will be this plan and that these kids will really be working on their issues from the first day that they're.
I would anticipate, Pat, that we would really lean on that person to really guide us through.
Very, very much so.
Was this an experimental type thing? Or unfortunately, if we got to that third step, is there a real problem here that we have to help this?
We're now seeing a real pattern.
There needs to be intervention at that point, and that's where definitely the misuse counselor comes in.
I think that.
Heavy duty, you know.
But I like the way they come right in at the first violation and then the second. So there really shouldn't be a third violation unless there's a very, very obvious abuse.
And that was one of the pieces in our previous, that it wasn't clear, we talked about that they'd be referred to a counselor in the first violation, and I think we were really thoughtful about putting it that it would be with the substance misuse on that first one.
Is that the school person or can they go outside of the school?
They could go outside of the school, but we now have the opportunity so that that is no longer a barrier. We have them, they will be in-house, and so it's right there and we can have direct access to them right away.
And you can work with them. The plan needs to involve certain people, and that's certain people in-house, as well as certain people within the family and the individual.
And at every step, when we're, if there's a plan that's developed, it could be the substance misuse counselor within, and it could be some outside pieces that need to happen.
If the student is seeing somebody outside, we can always consult with our counselor. Brian?
Yeah, I love the referral program, I love the reduction, because again, we're building character, I think that's, that's critical. I'm curious your thoughts on something, you know, I call this the three strikes plan, really, because there's three strikes. I know a lot of schools have gone to a very strict zero tolerance policy, which has also, you know, kind of put some emphasis on, this is extracurricular and, you know, it has some of this other piece as well, but it kind of puts the emphasis on, it's not kind of a slap on the wrist, you know, it's 15 days, it's more of a, hey, if you do this, here's the consequences. I'm just curious if there's any discussions on that or if you guys have, you know, kind of your opinion on that, you know, versus, one versus the other and the benefits.
There was a lot of conversation. It really, it stemmed from the difference between one violation and two violations of where we were before. And it really came back to what are our beliefs of keeping kids involved, keeping kids participating, and to remove all of that really was not aligned to what I think our philosophy is about, you know, getting kids involved and what we know about kids involved and how they perform in school. So the first time you have a violation to move a kid to the side and say, "You're never going to participate again," was, there wasn't a lot of ground swell of support for that. And I do understand that line of thinking, I just don't think that in our place of education that, you know, I tell kids all the time, "This is the best opportunity you have, because you can make mistakes. Let's have a growth mindset of moving forward." And so to say zero is a pretty high threshold, and it doesn't really hit that appropriate balance that we're looking for.
Yeah, I was just curious.
Yeah, certainly. And over years, the zero tolerance is, hasn't been seen as overly effective in addressing the issue. So I won't go as far as research, because I don't know the research, but I know that that is very much out there in our community about.
Yeah, I was, I was curious, because I.
Some kids being involved keeps them straight.
Yep.
Yeah. My niece and nephew were under a zero tolerance policy and.
There were some pieces to that for, for us to be able to participate in that conversation of, "My kid did nothing and your kid had a violation," and where is that balance? And to really hone in on their well-being and their character all at the same time. Because like I said, the majority of our kids are not violating.
Well, and I think what's nice about this is, like you said, you can make a mistake. You know, there's going to be those kids that obviously are going to continue to make mistakes, but there's that one that got caught in the wrong situation at the wrong time and at least this way, they have a plan, you know, they can reinstate themselves, they can, they can take that initiative, and I think that's, that's important.
And then distribution, sale, and manufacturing. This moves up a higher threshold for us and it does, and it's, kind of stays aligned to our overall substance policy. It has some deeper and stronger language than just usage. Students found in violation of selling and/or furnishing illegal substances will be suspended from athletic co-curricular participation for the remaining season or semester or up to one calendar year. This will also result in a loss of eligibility for captaincy leadership positions for one calendar year. So it elevates that and it gives, it doesn't define that it is automatically one calendar year, but it could be for the remainder of the season or semester or for the calendar year, depending on the severity. Are we talking about distributing a device or are we talking about distributing a material, a product? So it allows for the administrators to determine what's most appropriate there. And more times than not, when we are in a situation of sale and distribution, we're very much in conversation with the, our SRO and with Ms. McClellan and Ms. Grandin about how this is going. So it doesn't happen just in a vacuum and there's a lot of conversation that goes, just because the sale and distribution reaches another threshold.
And so I'm glad to hear that the SRO is finally involved at this level of distribution and.
Oh, definitely.
I would say.
Well, and that's some of the unspoken pieces. We didn't delineate each one of those all the way through, but if there's a violation of possession of, say, marijuana in school, whether the person is an athlete or a non-athlete, the SRO is involved in that process. So it, you know, it doesn't sidestep any of the other procedures that we would typically do for whether it happened in school or outside of school. When those things occur outside of school, sometimes that information is facilitated to us by the police department, sometimes.
So is there a responsibility, for example, Scott, if you know about a student that's doing this, is there a legal responsibility for you to report it to the police, like teachers do for child abuse and all that? Even though it's not spelled out in here?
Yeah, it's not, it's not part of this, it's part of administrative responsibilities. It sits in another category altogether. It's not built into this.
We have specific policy around this.
Yeah, this is, this is participation in extracurricular, so it doesn't, doesn't encompass every other part of any kind of substance violation that may occur within school and what our roles and responsibilities are to that.
So the paragraph, first paragraph there says, "The remainder of the season or the semester or up to one year." Who, who is making that decision?
The administration.
And does that need to be clear? It doesn't say who's going to determine this. It's not, it doesn't say that there's a committee doing this, it doesn't say the eligibility committee, it doesn't say that it's your director or your coach, it doesn't specify who's making that decision. Who has the authority?
We can add that, that.
Yeah, I'm just saying, I think it needs.
Yeah, administration will determine.
And at some point, I think it needs to say, at this level, we need to reference the policy that we have of selling, using, whatever, giving away on it. I mean, this is just, yes, this is just a co-curricular.
Right, but there's other policies.
Right, so we need to reference on that last page, on that last somehow. Now, it comes into play or whatever, however you want to word it, but we need, this is when we jump to the other policy.
Okay.
It says someplace in there.
On that page.
Might be in the very beginning that it says, anything here.
Yeah, it does.
Is subject to all the policies.
The second paragraph.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
It does say that, we can add it again.
Will be held responsible under this policy, confirmed violation of this policy, no matter where or when. No, whoops, I thought it was.
Always someplace.
No, it was, I did read it.
Well, can we highlight it and put it down here?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can add it again. That's not, that's not a problem.
This is two different things. We're talking about extracurricular activities.
Third paragraph, last sentence.
The school policy would govern what they do with the violations, right? This here is completely about extracurricular activities. But the school, our policies went to refer to the.
Correct. Yep.
Police and all of that, that's completely two different.
And so that's where it needs to go on the, on the end, I think, is that when you finally, if you're selling, distributing, or whatever you're doing with it, and it's beyond the scope of this policy.
It could say, may, may, may have further consequences.
Refer to our policy.
As, to the policy number.
Right, right, right.
Other school policies.
Yeah, one thing.
Because you don't need to repeat all that language, but then they'll go right to it and say, "Okay, we're at this level now, we're at this policy level, this next one."
Strictly prohibited in violation of the law.
It's in the third, it's in the third paragraph, says, "Student participants will be subject to school department and extracurricular code, blah, blah, blah."
Refer to the exact policy, so a parent can go to it or the student can go to it.
Policies. Yep, great.
See what their obligations at that point. Or as a precursor, before they get to that point, they can say, "Oh, God, that's where I'm going to be, you know, so I'm going to just back off and hopefully."
Good job.
Yeah, excellent work.
Thank you for asking along the way.
Yes, that was very helpful.
I like the humaneness of this. I mean, I know that some go to zero policy, zero, you know, tolerance, but you know, if you've got students so, who so quickly get hooked at this age, you know, you've got to give them some wiggle room and work with them, because we can't say to them, "That's it, you're a lost cause and we're not going to do it anymore." You have to work with it.
And that's, that's what we heard from our Healthy Andersgagen representative, that the electronic cigarette, the amount of nicotine in those devices is so high that the addiction is happening so quickly.
Yes.
And spiraling out of control.
Yeah. I've got to get some more information from that person, too, because I wanted to get a lot more background information beyond what she gave us.
She does a fascinating presentation of, she brings in all the electronic cigarettes and she brings in the jewels.
She did that for the city council, yeah.
Yeah, it's.
But I'd like to have like all her backup information, so I can, you know, present it to certain people who think that those things.
So this, this will be in the ball, oh, contract.
This is excellent, thank you very much. This is really good.
Thank you, guys.
And moving on, we have policies, of which Michelle is the lead.
Yeah.
Running back. Just joking. Okay. So yes, now we move into policies. We were in administrative procedures there for a minute and now we're moving on. So tonight, as you saw in your packet, we have some policies and some procedures that are up for first reading. Our policies are up for first reading and our procedures are up for approval. So the first is substance-free schools, and here we have it, right, right along with our discussion tonight. Basically, adjustments here to address, as you've heard over and over, the issues around vapes and electronic cigarettes and our tobacco products in our schools, to bring that up to date. Those were primarily or almost exclusively the updates there on that. Questions on ADC, substance-free schools?
I have a question.
Sure.
In paragraph two, the last sentence, I think it can be read a couple of different ways. It says, "The school committee will support efforts to discourage the use of tobacco, drugs, and alcohol by staff, as well as to educate students about the potential harmful effects of these substances." Now, I know it says, "Will support efforts to discourage." Are you talking about use in school or am I supposed to sit at Gritty's on a Friday night and say, "You shouldn't be drinking a beer over there, because you work for the Auburn School Department." So I.
You know what's interesting, Pat? That's not, that's, that's old language that's just carried forward.
What do you mean?
That's been in there. That wasn't one of the changes.
Well, it jumped out at me today when I read it.
No, that makes sense, that makes good, yeah.
I, I, I don't think that.
I think it's during school.
Yeah, just need, I don't think it means that I'm going to support efforts to stop everybody that works for the school department from having a glass of wine or whatever, because that's a personal.
Absolutely.
Life decision, so if it could be just delineated a little clearer, what you mean.
Yeah, thoughts on that?
It probably is meant.
It's your policy, so I'm.
It probably is meant to say, discourage them from using those type of things.
Yeah, I think this has been carried over for a long time, isn't that interesting? We went back historically and looked at it.
That they don't, yeah, that teachers shouldn't be smoking and drinking and using drugs.
In public.
Staff, not just.
Doesn't say in public.
Doesn't say in public, I think it's.
That's what I'm asking you.
To discourage them to use the very things.
I can't answer you.
That's the million dollar question.
That's what I'm saying, if I can't answer.
Well, it says, "Will support efforts," so that means I'm going to have to support efforts to have a workshop at Edward Little about teachers or any school that smoke, do drugs, or just drink alcohol. I can't support that.
Well, it's probably if you have a problem, it's like students, if you have a, if a staff member has, I think what I remember this, and this is when I was a teacher, is it was, if you feel you have a smoking or alcohol or drug problem, the school committee's going to support. So if we have a teacher that we are suspecting, maybe the misuse.
Maybe we can add the, I'm just sitting here trying to think, what are we trying to say?
I like that, I think that's what it was, is so if a teacher may have a drinking problem, we're going to get them help and lead them to the resources. Exactly.
And you say it down below, but this sentence is not clear.
Oh, yeah, Pat, absolutely.
Yeah, I think it was a misuse.
I agree with Pat, because if, if you go into Gritty's at any time of week or day, no.
I hope not every time.
Not after.
Please tell us after school. Please tell us after school.
If you go to Gritty's.
Tell me if they're there at lunch.
After this meeting. Exactly, Pat.
Right, I know.
If you go into Gritty's in the afternoon after a workshop, there will be a table.
Absolutely.
Of administrators and staff there.
No, I don't think anyone here is, well, maybe somebody is, I don't want to speak, but I'm not saying that it shouldn't be there, I just, I was confounded by it.
Can't you simply add the word responsible use?
Right.
Something like that.
Instead of over-killing this.
I like the misuse.
Misuse?
Just say, discourage the misuse of tobacco, drugs.
Okay, that's good.
Which is what Michelle suggested.
Yeah, I think that'd be good. Yep.
Thank you, Pat.
Because it does sound like, yes, we're being judgmental.
Well, and I don't think we uphold that.
No, we don't.
That's right, that's, that's the, what I'm saying.
Yeah.
We're going to cover these one at a time, are you going to get me through the?
Anything else? Well, I'm just making sure there's nobody else, nothing else on that one? Okay. The second policy tonight is the program for English learners, IHBEA. Less change in the policy, the changes in that, this policy are around up-to-date language that we use. We used to talk about English language learners, it's more about English learners now, and so we brought those things, the current vernacular being used, into this policy.
Any questions?
This is first reading?
Yeah, this is the first reading. I entertain a motion to approve the first reading of the two policies.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, very good, we move on.
Great, okay, now we go to procedures, the, the single reading that we need on this, and approval. Substance-free schools procedures, ADCR-R, and again, we worked with, as we talked about when Mary Karen was here, we worked with Healthy Andrew Scoggan to look at current practices, policies, both for best practice purposes, but also to align with more current research and law around these issues, so those are the changes.
Any questions?
So moved.
No, we're not moving it yet, we're gonna take them both at once. Next point, next procedure.
Sure, and then, second, we have the LAW Plan Components and Recommended Procedures, which is IHBEA-R, and there was a lot of revision here, again, to align with some changes in the law, a lot of language updating in that particular procedure, and some changes in the assessment protocols, so that's what you see here for changes.
LAW stands for?
Doesn't stand for anything, it's someone's name, actually, it was a court case that influenced these procedures.
Any questions? Entertain a motion to approve the two procedures, this is the final approval, or full approval?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor, very good, done deal.
Excellent.
Committees? Do you meet as a finance committee?
We have not met as a finance committee, but I have a question, did we send out a notice to a finance, a credit company for hot lunch?
We have not done anything with that yet, I put out feelers for who other people are using, and got no response, so I have to-
Okay.
-look at other channels, so that we can move ahead with that, but thank you for the reminder.
Alphita, we have a city councilor.
A few quick blurbs, and then three questions at the end. We approved a proclamation that this month of July is Parks and Recreation Month, and we have a lot going on, so I encourage everybody out there to do stuff that's going on here in our grand city of Auburn, and elsewhere. Second thing is, we had a first reading and the public hearing on the issuance of bonds for the Norway Arena, we looked at the, you know, the possibility of issuing a bond, taking out a bond, and then ending up owning it ourselves, because we're paying lease towards it, and in the long run, it's going to save us money, so if you want to take a look, any of these things, you can take a look at the website, the city website, and see the follow-up paperwork that goes along with it, usually we have about like 300 pages every single meeting, so this is a good thing, and a lot of people were under the misinformation that this is like spending more money, well, we are already spending the money, we're paying lease, and, and we're, we're paying for the lease, so this will be a very good way to save money, and own it, and then we can do what we need with that. We're still always, also looking at keeping, trying to get out of the red, get into the black, there's a lot going on. The third one is, we have some appointments, Matthew Duval is, was appointed to the planning committee, and it's, it's going to end, actually, in January 2020, and Leonard Kimball is assigned to, appointed to the ethics panel, and that's going to end in January 1st, 2021. We took up the topic of charter review, you know, our charter needs to be, you know, reviewed, there was a suggestion made to have it done through an ad hoc committee, and we, we talked a lot about that at length, and we felt that it needs to be a charter commission, and it needs to be done the right way, and it needs to take time, we need to review the whole thing, doesn't mean that everything's gonna change, but that's our opportunity to kind of match what we're doing with our strategic planning in the city, and to see where we're going, and see if this charter is going to help it rather than hinder it, so that's going to be, and, and people who are, who would be interested in the commission would have to run, it would have to be through an election. Another thing is approval of signage, so if you want to see where all the signs are going, there is a complete list in the website that shows where all of the signs will be installed, and we approved two police constables who can bear firearms, and one fire constable who can, will not bear firearms. And we, the last item for information purposes is, we approved the citizens' participation plan for the year 2020 to 24, this is recommended by the, the community development staff for CDBG and home consolidation plans, this is, this is a HUD-sponsored recommendation that we go through every year, they require that the grantees adopt this plan, and it's their plan, we don't have to make it up, they already have the plan, and to encourage citizens to participate in development of program plans, amendments, and performance report, with the emphasis on involving the low-to-moderate income persons. And there's been two changes made from the past plan, one was to reduce the citizen advisory committee from members of 20 down to 11, and to reduce the term length from five years to three, so those are some changes that were made. And with the library, we just finished our auction, and we were hoping for a little bit better results, but we still had, you know, some wonderful results, however, we thought that we could really ramp it up by holding a, starting in October, we talked a lot about how we could improve in various areas, so we're going to be working on that, we will have a, what do you call it, like, a committee working on, just like kind of public relations kind of thing. And the one question I had, had to do with the, the number of hires, and we talked about that a minute ago, so if, again, if you could send the school committee a complete list of the new hires, what the position in the school, and then the same thing, who's waiting in the wings, and so that way, we can have a, a review of that. A second question that came about from, from various people is, and I think, Scott, you might be able to answer this question, how many of our seniors did not graduate this year that we, we were expecting to graduate?
That was all done in the PowerPoint, the, the data PowerPoint had that in it.
So, how many?
Well, I mean, I don't have the number at the top, but that was in there, how many went to adult ed, how many went to things, so-
Right, so do we have any who did not graduate?
Yes, yes, we did.
Okay, so, we don't-
You have the number in the PowerPoint, I don't have it at the top of my head. What we did last time, it was part of it.
Yes, okay.
It, it was one of the slides. I know, I don't have it on me either.
I mean, for the, you know-
So, it's, it's, it's published, and you can have, we can send it.
So, you have the PowerPoint, and the PowerPoint gets posted with the minutes?
Of the last meeting, okay.
So, there was one slide on that.
One slide, okay, and one more question that I had, I know the last workshop day is always busy for everybody, and, but there was, there was some consternation in terms of, you know, at the high school, there was a lot of conversation going around right now in terms of grading, so is grading still something that we need to be looking at in terms of, you know-
The city council?
That was, that was brought up at city council?
Not at city, yeah, they, well, city council is also through our citizens, who have, who have spoken to us.
Well, they need to be directed to me.
Right, yeah, that-
Citizens asking city council need to be asking me, and you can just forward those emails to me, and we'll answer them.
Okay.
I've received no communication, so, if there is something, and I don't believe Scott has, so, if there's any communications, it should be going through the chain of command.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And Alfita, can you mention the city council, let Bonnie Hayes and Bob Manley think the city should buy Crescent Beach, so our urban youth have a place to swim?
I, I can say that, I know the mayor has believed that, too, yeah, yeah, and I've, I've said the same thing.
Very good, other committees that have met, who, Pat, do you have any? I don't believe any of the others have met since our last meeting.
Tom, excuse me, just a reminder, we do need another member for our-
I have one, I have one.
Oh, okay.
So, I will inform you, Brian has volunteered to be additional member of the Transformation Appeals Committee.
Mr. Kendall, there was a meeting tonight, I wanted to make you all aware, of the parent, a sub-group of the parent advisory committee, and they are looking at our parent, actually, we're gonna change the name to our family engagement policy, so I wanted you to know that that was in the works, they were doing some really deep work, not just some boilerplate work of looking at the values that we have around parent involvement, family involvement in our schools, so, stay tuned.
If anyone else here is in Ward 1, and would like to sign my nomination paper, so I can come back and do this again, I have a petition here. Ward 1 votes at Washman, so if you voted Washman, you could sign it.
All right, great.
Very good, all right, our next meeting will be July 24th, followed by August 7th, August 21st, and then September 4th, after school starts. No need for an executive session, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, declare us adjourned, thank you very much.